Cannot be taken lightly. It outlines and communicates to the public how the city will mitigate existential, environmental threats such as sea level rise, more frequent and more intense storms, and a warming planet. And furthermore, it provides strategies to improve important city services such as waste management and public transportation. The plan makes sure our city is safe and well-run. That's why — oh, look what my staff said. That's why I sponsored Local Law 17 of 2008 and Local Law 84 of 2013, which requires the mayor's office to publish a long-term sustainability plan every four years. Thank you, staff. The committee will also hear Intro 286 by Councilmember Rivera to my left in relation to the maximum volume and type of siren used by emergency vehicles. Councilmember Rivera will give her statement on her bill at the conclusion of my statement. Intro 611 by Councilmember Brannon requiring the consideration of net carbon impacts of each unit of appropriation during the budget process. We're going to hear that. Intro 898 by Councilmember Aviles requiring DEP to translate the city's air complaint program portal into the designated citywide languages. And Intro 960 by Councilmember Brewer, who is also here, who will give a statement regarding authorized emergency vehicles to have an emergency signal device that emits pulsating low-frequency tones. Intro 983 by Councilmember Brannon requiring decast to install solar canopies on all city-controlled parking lots where they are deemed to be cost-effective. And Resolution 605 by myself and Councilmember Aviles in support of A 5338 and S 5181 state legislation which prohibit — which would prohibit the discharge of radiological agents into any New York waterways. To be clear, I feel strongly about prohibiting the release of any radiological agent into the state waterways and do not support the watered-down language of A 7208 and S 6893, which would only prohibit discharge into the Hudson River in connection with the decommissioning of the IP nuclear power plant. Much has happened since the last long-term — since the last long-term sustainability plan was published in 2019, and some of these events have made it harder for the city to accomplish its goals on sustainability. For example, science have reconsidered the impact of atmospheric methane on global warming. Hurricane Ida threatened the city with storm surge and pluvial flooding. And the closure of the IP Energy Center and COVID-19 pandemic, which shifted power use patterns, have slowed the city's progress towards its decarbonization goals. The Plan 2023, the 2023 Plan YC, must address these new challenges head-on. I've taken a look at it. I think it does. Other events in the last four years have made it easier for the — easier for the city to meet its goals on sustainability. The state climate leadership and — CLCPA of 2019 set a statewide target to produce 70% of power from renewable sources by 2030 and 100% by 2040. And new, large-scale renewable energy projects are poised to significantly green New York City's energy grid, which may put the city — may, will put the city back on track to meet its 80-by-50 decarbonization goal. On April 20th, 2023, the Adams administration published its first long-term sustainability plan, Plan YC, Getting Sustainability Done. Unlike previous long-term sustainability plans, the plan takes into account new GHD inventory protocols that have been adjusted for the impact of fugitive methane, unlike previous iterations that have underestimated the effect of this potent greenhouse gas. The plan's inclusion of policies to reduce emissions from food productions and fugitive methane reflect the findings of these inventories. In particular, the plan has initiatives to reduce emissions from city agency food purchases by 33% before 2030, and to divert organic waste from landfills to biodigesters that use anaerobic digestion to break down — break down organic matter into methane that can be fed back into the system, reducing the dependence on more polluting sources of methane such as fracked gas. That is the longest sentence I've ever read in an opening statement, so we have a record. I want that to be noted by the council. And so, yeah. There are many challenges ahead as the city continues to grapple with the long-term and short-term effects of climate change. I hope that the council and the administration are able to work together, I'm sure we will, to refine and implement these — all of the initiatives of Plan YC. I'd like to thank the great committee staff, who have done such great work over the years. My council, Samara Swanson to my right, policy analyst Rikki Chala and Andrew Born, financial analyst Andrew Lane Lawless, and of course, my own legislative director, Nabi Khor, for all of their hard work. We're joined here by — by Councilmember Holden, member of the committee, who joins us via Zoom. Councilmember Nurse, a great member of this committee. We have sponsors of bills here, Councilmember Rivera and Councilmember Brewer. And before we invite the testimony from the administration and swear that in, the chair recognizes Councilmember Rivera for a statement on her bill, which is Intro 286. I recognize Councilmember Rivera for a statement.
Thank you, Chair Gennaro. Thank you to the members of the committee, and of course, the public and the administration. Good afternoon. I'm Councilmember Carlina Rivera, Representative for District 2 on the East Side. Thank you, Chair Gennaro, for holding this hearing and for the opportunity to say a few words about my bill being heard today. Intro 286 seeks to reduce the siren noise that negatively impacts quality of life for so many communities across the city by requiring alternating high- and low-two-tone signal devices on emergency vehicles. This bill would require that sirens do not exceed a noise level of 90 decibels. Many constituents from the East Side and the West Side contact our office about siren noise, and I know this is common in other offices. New Yorkers filed 739,527 noise complaints to the 311 hotline in 2022. We know that New York is a loud city, but that doesn't mean we have to suffer ear-piercing siren noise that disrupts daily life and neighborhood enjoyment while still allowing these vehicles to get through and get to people in time. There is no doubt. Analyses suggest that a 5 dB noise reduction scenario would reduce the prevalence of hypertension by 1.4% and coronary heart disease by 1.8%. The annual economic benefit is estimated at $3.9 billion. Mount Sinai Health System already uses the two-tone siren and its 25 ambulances that make around 100,000 trips per year. The switch was made in 2018 after decades of complaints from residents of the Upper East Side home of the hospital complex. When Mount Sinai's Emergency Medical Services Director, Joseph Davis, played siren options to see what locals liked, they hated them all, but the high-low sounds was least intrusive. Funny, right? Well, my bill on sirens did get a mention on SNL Weekend Update at one point, so you know it's mainstream. And as their joke implied, with this improvement, an ambulance ride would sound a little more Euro. And even SNL writers had to mention that a trip to the hospital here should hopefully have reeled universal health care at the end of it one day. We know that sirens are necessary, but they do not need to be as loud or as disruptive as they currently are. And I hope with discussion of this legislation, we can reach a point where it's bearable for everyone. And of course, always putting safety first. I urge my colleagues to support this legislation, and I thank the chair for allowing us to hear this bill on noise and public health. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And it is — and I will next recognize Councilmember Brewer, who will give us a statement on her bill that's being heard today, Intro 960. I recognize Councilmember Brewer for a statement.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Gennaro. And I certainly concur that our city is noisy, but certainly, too, one of the biggest complaints we get is siren noise. I happen to live between two hospitals, so I am really aware of it. So I'm introducing 960, and it will authorize emergency vehicles to have an additional siren, often called a rumbler, which emits a pulsating low-frequency tone to create vibrations that alert pedestrians and motorists and anyone else to the presence of the emergency vehicle. We all know that siren noise has become a part of our city's sound landscape. The current type and use of sirens and flashing lights to alert drivers and pedestrians to their presence can be challenging for emergency responders' ability to get a response from traffic and pedestrians, especially in noisy or crowded environments. I think that even though it is loud and disruptive as a siren, people have become desensitized and remain aloof, and this can lead to accidents and injuries. Pulsating low-frequency tones have been shown to be more effective than sirens and flashing lights at getting the attention of drivers and pedestrians. These tones can be heard and felt even in noisy environments. A rumbler, coupled with the use of high-low two-tone sirens by emergency response vehicles as outlined in Councilmember Rivera's bill, would have extensive health benefits. With around 9,200 NYPD cars, 50 of which have the rumbler now, 2,300 fire and EMT vehicles, and 700 Department of Correction emergency vehicles active on our streets, limiting the fleet's noise would have a marked effect, and that doesn't even count the private ambulances. In 2016, a study was done at the University of Michigan School of Public Health, and it concluded that a mere 5-decibel reduction — that's less than the sound of leaves rustling — in overall noise would one, reduce the prevalence of hypertension by 1.4% and coronary heart disease by 1.8%, saving $2.4 billion every year in health care costs and increasing economic productivity by $1.5 billion. So I was interested in this topic, so I certainly met with paramedics, EMTs, and I went along on a ride with New York Police Department Chief Robert Martinez. He has since retired, but when he was — last year, we went in the summer, and I saw for myself the behavior of cars and pedestrians with the rumbler. During the ride, the chief used the rumbler siren, and I saw vehicles respond immediately to the vibrating siren, ensuring a clear path for the emergency vehicle, and I must admit, they didn't pay attention to anything else. New Yorkers must not think that their complaints are falling on deaf ears. We can improve our quality of life by maintaining emergency responsiveness. And I want to just give you an example of what we experienced in the car. During the ride, as I indicated, we used a low-frequency siren, often called the rumbler siren. This newer kind of siren, which is — Chief Martinez has been all over the world talking about, and is used extremely well in European cities, uses the same tone as a typical siren but at much lower frequency. The rumbler transmits noise through high-output woofers and produces a vibrating sound as opposed to a shrieking one. A timer shuts off the tone after a short time, further reducing the duration. The lower frequencies emitted by the rumbler better penetrate vehicles and are less detrimental to public health and the quality of life compared to the tones of standard wailing sirens. During my ride, I saw other vehicles respond immediately to the vibrating siren so that we could get through. Just like everything else, there are challenges. I want to be honest with you because some feel that inside the car, although we've not heard complaints from the 50 who have it, it could be a little bit louder inside the car than outside the car. Has to be looked at. But in order to reduce excessive siren-related noise, our city should mandate that emergency responders use high-low as their default siren and cap sirens at 90 decibels as required by the proposed legislation and scale up their use of vibrating siren technology. City emergency response vehicles should allow the driver to toggle between high-low sirens and the vibrating low-frequency sirens in response to traffic conditions as I outlined. And we did a couple of op-eds on this topic. So I have — I really thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an incredibly important topic. People spend their whole day ear covering and being awakened in the middle of the night, and that needs to end. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Brewer. Thank you for your statement. Thank you for your bill. And we have Councilmember Aviles, who I believe is going to make a statement on Intro 898 and maybe on the REZO, but, you know, or whatever you want to do, okay? She has a REZO as well.
Great.
I recognize Councilmember Aviles for a statement.
Great. Thank you, Chair Gennaro. Thank you for holding this hearing today and for offering Intro 898 and REZO 605 the opportunity to be heard. I also want to thank the chair for his leadership on the issue of dumping radiological waste in one of our most precious resources, the Hudson River. I also want to thank our air quality and water quality advocates, many of whom are in the room today, for their help with both of these pieces of legislation. For those of you who may not know, I am Councilmember Alexa Aviles, and I represent District 38 in Brooklyn, an environmental justice community with a large, non-English-speaking constituency. Nearly half of our residents in my district natively speak Spanish, Mandarin, Fuginese, or Arabic. As an environmental justice community, we are also acutely impacted by the host of air quality issues, including the BQE, which cuts through our district, a truck route that runs through residential roadways, cruise ships that dump toxic exhaust into our neighborhood, last-mile facilities with vehicles that idle at their points of origin in our district, and on, and on, and on throughout the neighborhood. While Intro 898 only gets at the idling portion of what we experience in our district, why wouldn't we equip districts like mine to be able to take action where possible to limit our own exposure to harmful particulate matter? Right now, with the portal open only to English speakers, my community is not able to properly or effectively submit idling complaints. Expanding language access would not only help to potentially clean up our air, but also will allow access to financial incentives for doing so. Further, data collected through expanding access to the air quality portal might more accurately reflect what is happening across our cities rather than just what is happening in potentially more affluent communities. I look forward to hearing from the agency today on what resources may — we may need to make Intro 898 a reality. With regards to Resolution 605, I obviously want to give space for the co-prime sponsor and the chair to speak on this issue, but I want to emphasize that our city must take immediate action, as other municipalities around the state have already done, to condemn and even the suggestion — to condemn even the suggestion of allowing Houltec to dump radiological waste into the river that connects a broad expanse of our state and which supports an abundance of life, including our own. Tritium, which cannot be fully removed from wastewater, leaves pregnant women and children in harm's way and elevates the risk of cancer, not to mention the impact on our local ecosystems, which in New York City, we are trying desperately to restore in places like Bush Terminal Pierce Park located in my own district. Passing this resolution must be done with urgency to send the message to our state lawmakers and to Houltec Industries and anyone thereof likes that dumping will not be allowed in our river. So again, I want to thank the chair for his incredible support and resolute leadership on these issues. Thank you, my colleagues and advocates and everyone for fighting for a clean and healthy New York City.
Thank you, Councilmember Aviles. I appreciate your statement, and I did speak on the resolution in my opening statement. And, you know, thank you for all that you do and all of your environmental leadership. It's really greatly appreciated. And there we have it. And so I turn it over to Samara to administer the oath to our panel, and then after that, the commissioner and his colleagues can proceed with their good testimony.
Please raise your right hand.
How to put this thing on?
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth?
Whole truth and nothing but the truth today.
I do.
Thank you, Commissioner. A pleasure to have you and your colleagues here. We have a long partnership, going back a long time, and now it's a whole-new thing with the new Plan YC, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, and central staff. My name is Rohit T. Agarwal. I am the city's chief climate officer, in which capacity I oversee the mayor's office of climate and environmental justice and the commissioner of the New York City Department of Environmental Protection. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today about Plan YC, Getting Sustainability Done, our new strategic climate plan. And I'm joined by Victoria Cirillo, the acting executive director of MOC EJ.
If I could, I was going to jump in a second. If there's someone working on the soundboard that could up the output for Ritt's microphone?
Oh, here. If it's not close enough, I'll bring it closer.
Yeah, I thought it was close enough, but is — is there anybody on the soundboard, Sergeant? No? Okay, all right. We got it.
Try to speak up, then.
Okay.
And I will say, we have a broad cross-section of the MOC EJ team here to fill in any details that Vicky and I — Vicky and I are not fully up on, but we're doing okay. This Plan YC is the fifth strategic climate plan that the city has issued. The first Plan YC of Greener Greater New York was issued under the Bloomberg administration while I was director of long-term planning and sustainability. So I led the creation of that first strategic plan and oversaw the implementation of its 127 initiatives. In 2007, we were looking at ways the city could grow responsibly by putting forward the idea that a place like New York should and could take climate seriously. Today, we do take it seriously. New Yorkers are dealing with the effects of climate change, like dangerously high temperatures, flooding on sunny days, and of course, the air quality emergency that we had only two weeks ago. The plan we needed in 2007 is not the plan we need today. Far more than previous plans, the 2023 Plan YC is focused on getting stuff done. It doesn't just lay out goals, it details actions to achieve them. This plan builds on the priorities of the Adams administration and takes advantage of an unprecedented level of climate funding from the federal and state governments. As the mayor says in the plan's introduction, "This is the Get Stuff Done Plan YC. It was built on a series of strategic approaches and guiding principles that put the needs of New Yorkers first." The urgency of meeting climate challenges is evident in our approaches, particularly focusing on implementation, achieving near-term benefits for New Yorkers while also implementing long-term goals, making full use of federal and state funding, implementing climate-focused budgeting to align resources with sustainability and resilience goals, and streamlining the procurement process to expedite project delivery.
Okay.
While we are focused on doing this quickly, we are also focused on doing it right, and that involves the rest of our principles: centering environmental justice and health equity in our work, creating economic activity around climate action, strengthening private sector investments with incentives and mandates, and leading by example as a city government. Guided by these principles, we developed a strategic plan built around three main objectives: protecting ourselves from climate threats, improving quality of life, and building a green economic engine. All New Yorkers know that climate change is a real and present danger to our communities. We have been experiencing warmer temperatures, more extreme rainstorms, and more invasive coastal storm surges. Climate change threatens our health and safety. Its impacts directly lead to death and illness, home and business economic losses, neighborhood damage, and energy supply disruptions. Protecting us from climate change includes responding to the impacts we already face as well as reducing activities that contribute to it. For the former, we are adapting to the new realities of extreme heat and flooding. For the latter, we are working to reduce emissions from buildings, the most significant source of pollution in the city, and switching from fossil fuels to clean and reliable energy. Extreme heat doesn't make the headlines of other extreme weather, in part because wealthier New Yorkers can cool their homes to escape the worst consequences. But it does kill more New Yorkers each year than all other forms of extreme weather combined. According to an analysis by the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, about 370 New Yorkers die from heat-related causes every year. Heat is an emergency. That's why it's the first climate threat focused on in Plan YC. The plan details our commitment to developing a maximum indoor temperature policy by 2030 and restoring 1 million square feet of cool roofs. The plan also focuses on near-term solutions and building co-benefits into climate solutions. We included initiatives to achieve a 30% canopy cover, to plant more than 30,000 native trees and shrubs, and to make open spaces more accessible and connected. Increasing biodiversity also improves community health. Better access to open spaces offers health, social, and community benefits. I probably don't have to speak too much about the dangers presented from flooding in the city, especially not to this committee. Recent events have made this threat far too real, ranging from Hurricane Sandy, when 44 New Yorkers lost their lives, to Hurricane Ida two years ago, when 13 New Yorkers lost their lives. Many others were left with damaged and even destroyed homes from these events, and others faced flooding challenges during even mild storms or particularly along the shore during drier weather. In past hearings, I have spoken about our efforts to build more resilient communities, such as creating cloud burst projects in flood-prone neighborhoods. With Plan YC, we are going even further. For example, we look to create a new Bureau of Coastal Resilience at the Department of Environmental Protection. This bureau will focus on coastal flooding issues, complementing the stormwater flooding work that DEP has been doing, and bringing citywide flood mitigation strategies with our best experts working together in one agency. With one agency managing flood risk, although I will hasten to point out, there will always be a major role for this topic among other agencies. It will never be a wholly one-agency issue, but what we have to do is have one agency firmly in the lead and firmly responsible. But, sorry, back to my text now. But with one agency managing the overall process, we'll be able to streamline planning, implementation, and operations. We are also planning to launch a voluntary housing and land — mobility and land acquisition program. We are designing initiatives that plan for the near term as well as the long term. Those near-term benefits are most crucial for overburdened residents, the people who deal with flooding every time it rains or every time there's a high tide. There are New Yorkers who are living in trauma, a word the mayor often uses and an apt one for climate change impacts, and we need to make their lives better as soon as we can. Long-term and short-term efforts are not mutually exclusive. We need to address their concerns now while we continue our work on multi-billion-dollar long-term projects. A signature initiative in this plan is Climate Strong Communities, which I mentioned when I testified here in October as we marked the 10th anniversary of Superstorm Sandy. Through the Climate Strong Communities Program, we develop equitable resiliency projects focused in areas of the city that still face disproportionate risks from climate change. Specifically, Climate Strong Communities is designed to invest in communities left unaddressed by Hurricane Sandy recovery funding, the communities that you so movingly talked about when I sat at this table six months ago. These resiliency projects place community needs where they belong, in the center stage. The program focuses on environmental justice communities, and its multi-hazard resiliency sustainability projects will position us to compete for federal and state funding. We are building with this program on existing work in East Harlem and Canarsie while beginning work in Soundview, Corona, Brownsville, and Port Richmond. The benefits will be felt in every borough. As I mentioned, buildings are the greatest single contributor of greenhouse gas emissions in the city. At our press conference in April, Mayor Adams spoke about building on the work of his predecessors, work that includes the implementation of Local Law 97, the Climate Mobilization Act. This groundbreaking law requires the largest buildings in the city to meet new energy efficiency and greenhouse gas reduction milestones by 2024 and 2030. This is one of the most important defining climate laws in the country. Our plan commits us to enforcing that law, writing the rules, and ensuring that we are partnering with building owners through information and service. We are also building job pipelines, which I'll address in a few moments. A critical component of protecting us from climate threats is also transitioning to clean and renewable energy sources. Currently, the city relies on fossil fuels and aging infrastructure, which contribute to our high energy costs. Plan YC includes plans to maximize the opportunities for climate infrastructure on city-owned property, connecting New York City to clean electric resources, and assisting individual building and homeowners so that they can install clean energy on their properties. Many climate solutions are nature-based, and most provide co-benefits that improve quality of life even when they are not serving resilience purposes. We are committed to lowering emissions while ensuring that everyone in the city has equal access to vibrant and healthy space. Plan YC plans to mitigate pollution and increase resilience, but also critically enhance our quality of life. These goals are achieved by having lush and accessible parks and open spaces, street trees, clean waterways, reliable transportation options, and access to fresh and healthy food. For example, heat reduction initiatives such as planting trees and increasing canopy cover don't merely reduce heat, they also improve air quality, provide habitats for native species, and create a more beautiful and relaxing environment. And I will point out also, they are great at managing stormwater as well. Similar co-benefits — Similar co-benefits are provided by the extensive Blue Belt and Green Infrastructure Systems that D E P creates to manage stormwater and reduce combined sewer overflows, which in turn improves the quality of our local waterways, improve public transportation options, reduce emissions, and make it easier for residents to get around. Another important initiative is reducing localized air pollution, such as getting polluting trucks off city streets. We have too many idling trucks on our streets. We appreciate the city council's work to further restrict idling near green spaces earlier this year, and we look forward to strengthening the enforcement of idling rules. We are also working with the public sector on transitioning fleets to electric power so they don't have to idle again. We can create economic activity through climate action. Investments in climate action can contribute to the city's economic recovery and long-term prosperity. The initiatives focused on job creation address education and good jobs in emerging sectors that build long-term economic mobility while benefiting our environmental justice communities. We are doing that particularly by cultivating the offshore wind sector and by activating climate resource hubs for workforce development. Greening the city also means creating a waste and circular economy to reduce our overall waste production and beneficially reuse the resources we currently throw away. For example, we have recently reached a milestone for renewable energy at our wastewater resource recovery facility at Newtown Creek. On March 31st, the facility began injecting biogas, a natural waste product of the wastewater treatment process, into the national grid system. The biogas byproduct is chemically identical to fossil fuel gas, so it can be used by existing systems. Unlike fossil fuel, biogas is produced as part of the natural carbon cycle. It does not add new carbon to the atmosphere. The biogas produced at Newtown Creek is able to serve about 2,500 households, meaning that 2,500 homes can be taken off fossil fuel gas. And of course, just yesterday, we had that announcement. I want to thank Councilmember Nurse and Councilmember Wrestler for joining us, along with the EPA Regional Administrator, Deputy Mayor Joshi, and Vicky. As stated in the report, extreme weather disproportionately harms communities of color and low-income residents who have faced generations of systemic racism, disinvestment, and inequality. Since taking office, Mayor Adams has been dedicated to supporting environmental justice and health equity. The mayoral office that oversees climate sustainability and resilience work is the Mayor's Office for Climate and Environmental Justice. This value, this terminology, has been reflected in the work we have done thus far, such as citing the first set of cloud burst mitigation projects in E J neighborhoods, and the commitment is a primary principle of Plan Y C. Further, we will be releasing a standalone E J N Y C report this fall, which will detail the environmental justice movement in New York City and document the environmental inequities facing low-income communities and communities of color. This report will be the first of its kind in the city, and I will add, it will be designed to lead into an E J plan, which will eventually mesh fully with Plan Y C, to get at those root causes so that we can divert course and not just document what's going on. A written plan is nice, but promising something isn't the same as accomplishing something. This is the Get Stuff Done Administration, and this is the Get Stuff Done Plan Y C. So how do we do that? First, under this administration, climate impact will be considered in all of the city's budget decisions and investments. We look at the money spent on climate work, and we recognize that it can and should and must be spent holistically. This administration is committed to ensuring that every aspect of the city's budget takes climate into account, and through it, the Office of Management and Budget will engage agencies on the carbon impacts and the consistent of their budget requests and the consistency of their budget requests with the city's overarching climate goals in Plan Y C. I've said, actually, lots of people have said, but if you want to see somebody's priorities, you want to see somebody's values, you look at their budget. And this administration's budget is going to move to the place where it fully reflects our climate values. Further, federal and state governments have approved unprecedented levels of funding specifically for climate work. We are taking full advantage of the opportunity this provides. We have applied already for nearly $1.5 billion of federal funding in 2022, and we will continue to apply for as much as we possibly can from these new sources. Unfortunately, and I've stated this to this committee before, arbitrary limits set by the state prevent New York City from getting our fair share of this kind of funding, particularly of state and federal grants, which is the most valuable kind of funding. Plan Y C includes plans to push as hard as we can to make sure that the wonderful opportunities in the bipartisan infrastructure law, the Inflation Reduction Act, and the New York State Environmental Bond Act are fully available to New York City. And I will add once again my thanks to the chair and to this committee for the resolution that was passed last year, encouraging the voters of New York State to adopt the Environmental Bond Act, but also very clearly calling for an equitable distribution of its funds to reflect the fact that New York City is 44% of the population, 59% of the state's disadvantaged communities, and 62% of its tax base, and yet we rarely get anywhere near 44% on the dollar from programs like the Environmental Bond Act. We've got to change that. This administration needs partnership from the city council to make these initiatives successful, and I look forward to discussing your thoughts on this plan and continuing an active dialogue beyond today's hearing. Before I conclude, I'll touch on three of the bills being heard today. First, Intro 611 would require certain carbon accounting as part of the budget process. We are, as I said, embracing carbon accounting as part of New York City's budget process through the climate budgeting initiative that is in Plan Y C. Climate budgeting is a complex and emerging practice that will take time to implement effectively. To that end, we are deeply engaged with and learning from globally leading municipalities, and we'll be rolling out the first phase of climate budgeting as we plan for fiscal year '25. We are happy to stay engaged with the council as we proceed. It may be possible to legislate on this in a few years, but we believe it would be premature to do so now. My colleagues at O M B and I would welcome further engagement in this process, and we are happy to meet with any member who wishes to discuss it in more detail. Intro 898 would require that the citizens' air complaint program portal be translated into the designated citywide languages. D E P highly prioritizes language services in all of our engagement with the public, including working with those who submit idling reports through this portal. All publicly distributed materials are available in these languages, and outreach staff can access interpretation services on their city phones as needed. We are very proud of the anti-idling program and want to work with the council to make it as accessible as possible for all New York City residents. One thing I will add, and Councilmember Aviles, I will point out that there is a distinction, and we can talk about further in Q and A, between general city services and 311 and what is submitted to the enforcement program. The detail that we are not yet fully worked out with oath is that because what is submitted is evidence in a legal proceeding, it is different from a normal city complaint, and that is a detail that we have still to work out about the full viability of your bill from our perspective. Intro 983 would require solar canopies to be reconstructed in city-owned or operated parking lots. We fully support expanding solar power infrastructure around the city. It is, of course, a key aim of Plan Y C. In partnership with the Department of Correction, D C A S installed the city's first solar canopy in December 2022. We support the expansion of solar carports and canopies, but prioritizing parking lot solar canopies is not necessarily the best solution in all locations. So we would like to work with the council to develop a solar expansion program that prioritizes the best opportunities and gets the greatest return. Intro 286 would require alternating high- and low-two-tone signal devices on emergency vehicles. This, we believe, is a bill that our partners at D C A S, F D N Y, and N Y P D will need to address. I want to thank this committee and Chair Gennaro for your ongoing attention to climate change, not just during this administration, but for some of you all the way back to Superstorm Sandy, and particularly for you, Chairman Gennaro, well before that. Climate change is the biggest challenge of our lives, but we have the tools to address it, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your comprehensive testimony, and we really appreciate all the that you put into Plan Y C and all of the good things that will flow from it. Just want to recognize that we're joined by Councilmember Wrestler, Councilmember Gutierrez is here as well, Councilmember Holden is joining us remotely, and did we find out about Councilmember Holden?
No hands raised.
Okay, okay. The council has this rule that if you're remote, you can only ask questions if there's a quorum. So while we have a quorum, I want to give an opportunity to ask questions, but, and do we have other members who signed up for questions?
Yes. Nurse, questions?
Okay. This is budget time, and everyone's very busy, and I'm going to be here for the, you know, for the whole hearing, so it's my practice during really busy times to give my colleagues who might not have the ability to stay for the whole hearing to, you know, get their questions in. So I have a whole question set, gone through the statement and also other prepared questions, but I'd like to give an opportunity for my fellow colleagues that have to run off and do other things to get their questions in. I understand that Councilmember Nurse has been, you put down for questions?
Yes.
Right? Okay. Just one second.
Who else?
Okay.
Albert?
Aviles? Okay. And so, but for now, I recognize Councilmember Nurse for questions. You'll get plenty from me, don't worry about it. I'm not going to cheat you.
Thank you, Chair, that's very generous. I'm not usually prepared this early to do questions. I, I mean, since we're out of order, kind of, I had questions about flood insurance One of the steps for Initiative 21, Strengthen Our Communities, the long title, was to increase the number of flood insurance policies here in New York City, but the plan is showing that it has slightly decreased, and I was curious what steps you are taking to spread awareness and increase the number of people who are signed up for flood insurance, especially in areas that maybe five years ago weren't really experiencing flooding in their homes and businesses as well.
So first of all, and I'll let Vicky and perhaps some of her colleagues to answer the specific test, specific steps that we are taking, but I'll just start by saying that one of the things that your very important question raises is the extent to which we have to help New Yorkers think very differently about the climate. You know, I've said before that for 400 years, New York has existed in a pretty forgiving climate zone, right? We have not had to worry about tornadoes coming to kill us, we have not had to worry traditionally about hurricanes coming to kill us, we don't tend to worry about earthquakes coming to get us. What we've learned over the last decade is, thanks to climate change, the weather can kill us here too, right? As it has for many New Yorkers through several of these events and the heat that we've talked about. The city can and should and must do a great deal to upgrade its infrastructure and prepare and create that kind of citywide resilience, but as you have in places like the West Coast and the earthquake zones, in the Midwest and the tornado zones, we are not going to be able to run away from the fact that individual New Yorkers are going to need to take steps to protect themselves and protect their property. And I think getting flood insurance is that kind of practice that we have to help all New Yorkers realize they have to take seriously their own particular flood risk and not assume that the city can always protect them. So with that...
Yeah, just a few more things. You know, we do partner with the Center for New York City Neighborhoods on Flood Help New York. We are working on more communication around flood risk and options for insurance. Everyone should be able to get insurance. We also advocated with the state to flood risk disclosure bills, the pass, the Senate and Assembly, right, on both for renters and homeowners. So that is part of our advocacy work as well. But you will see, we are actually just working on marketing materials. You'll see at bus shelters and communities that we're targeting, particularly E J communities, so that people are aware of their options and how to get support and help.
Thank you, that's really helpful. I think, you know, more outreach would be, you know, especially over the summer months as we head into hurricane season would be helpful. You know, this is an issue that I'm tracking very strongly because of the impacts in my community, but, you know, all these indicators are coming from across the country. You know, we just saw that in Florida, a bunch of companies just pulled back from writing any new policies. We know in California, things are changing. We've even seen and heard the federal government is looking at, is FEMA going to be able to support people as we start to move into these types of more kind of increasing climate crisis? And so I'm curious what you all are doing to think about those conversations proactively and that trend. I think the experience of Ida and the fact that the city didn't even, didn't consider one single claim for damages was already a clear indication that most people are going to be left on their own and is a clear, kind of a, what you're saying, Commissioner, about, you know, New Yorkers are going to have to start figuring this out, but I think they need that deeper level of engagement to start to really concretely think about that. And so I'm just curious what kind of conversations you're having about how to project where the private sector doesn't want to insure places like New York City.
So I think, so first of all, you're completely accurate in pointing out that the insurance industry is changing, and the insurance industry is probably smarter on this than many of us, just because they are so data-driven, right? I don't have a particular insight right now into what the insurance industry is thinking about New York City, but I will reiterate that this is the kind of thing that we are increasingly focused on. With one other thing that I'll add to what Vicky pointed out, another initiative that Plan Y C envisions is actually the expansion of scope of the New York City Accelerator, which is the city's kind of help desk for buildings, currently focused on Local Law 97 compliance, but exactly through so many conversations that we've seen, including the ones that you and I walked around Knickerbocker Avenue, having, there is a clear need for a way for citizens and homeowners and building owners to get initial basic guidance on what they can and should be doing and what their risks are. Last summer, we published Rainfall Ready, which was the action plan that the city put together, D E P-led, with M O C E J and several other agencies to start that process of raising awareness. It included the flood maps that now guide where we are going to do some of that outreach. It guided where we did the giveaways of those inflatable flood barriers, which we have more of this year, and we will be, excuse me, trying again, and it will increasingly guide D E P's own capital planning. But it's a question we are aware of. I don't have a, I don't have a clear indication yet of what it directly means for the insurance industry in New York.
Just one addition, something that we are looking at is parametric insurance. We'd be happy to give you a briefing on that, a pilot we're working on, which would actually ensure people, you know, when a threshold is met, that we could predict in advance. So we can definitely share more about that, it is a pilot.
Yeah. My last question, because I know...
Yeah, I'm going to say that the time limit is up, but, you know, Sandy is my chair as well, so I have to give her some extra time. It's my pleasure to give her a little more latitude to ask...
I'll always give you an extra question.
Another good question.
Just because this is a long-term thinking plan, you know, even last year, the council voted on a big U L E R P out in Canarsie on a big land project, a big housing development project, and I'm just curious how you all are thinking about how the city investing all, like, big chunks of dollars into building out in places where we know there's going to be constant need for mitigation, you know, recovery, you know, and this question of will flood insurance work out there? And I'm just curious how you all are having these conversations with H P D and that arm of the city to start thinking about when and where do we say, actually, the city dollars can't be going to investing in building places where it doesn't make sense anymore?
One of our fundamental challenges in New York, a city that, as we all know, is highly exposed to flooding and with more than 500 miles of coastline, but also a city that has an acute housing shortages that we all know about, is striking that balance between where we say that we're not going to build anything, where we say eventually we might do buyouts and actually retreat from, while not creating or exacerbating a housing crisis. I think in general, we have a number of places around the city where the Department of City Planning has said, due to flood risk, we should not be building. Then there are other places where there is flood risk, but because there is already a lot of surrounding activity, we are always going to have to do what it takes to protect that area, right? And in those cases where it's a little bit akin to infill in a flood-prone zone, we look at the... at the building standards so that that new construction does not add to flood risk, but we do not think that it is the right answer to leave that land vacant, just because, again, you're going to have to protect that neighborhood no matter what.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Nurse. I recognize Councilmember, Councilmember, Councilmember Aviles for questions.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your testimony. You know, I, I'm having a little bit of cognitive dissonance right now with a little bit of what the testimony is saying and what we are experiencing in my district, which is, includes the waterfront communities of Sunset Park and Red Hook. Like, so how does the policy of allowing the proliferation of unregulated last-mile logistics facilities to get clustered in a waterfront community get considered around its climate impacts? We can tell you what the impacts are. We've seen them across the country when it's happening, and yet there is no policy to mitigate, to stop, to rationalize. It is just allowing ongoing proliferation. As you know, we are an environmental justice community, and yet we have upwards of nine facilities clustered in a community with no waterfront usage. How did, how, where's the stuff in the climate change in the lens used in this situation? We have been screaming from the rooftops around this issue, and we received nothing in return but more facilities, more trucks, more cars, more Sprinter vans, and no regard.
So Councilmember, I will say, I think the issue of the proliferation of delivery hubs, particularly in Red Hook and also in the South Bronx, is something actually that's addressed very much in this plan and something that is, has very much occupied our attention. Unfortunately, the phenomenon you're describing, and you know this as well as, as we do, has to relate to the citywide zoning resolution, right? That the zoning text allows certain uses as of right that did not create the levels of traffic that they did 10 years ago, before delivery hubs were a thing the way they are now, and now have this byproduct that nobody had appreciated.
So is the zoning text going to get ready to stop this, to put a moratorium to stop the clustering of these facilities and to put in mitigation efforts and measures and resources into these communities?
Yes. So Councilmember, so first of all, and I'll ask my colleague Daphne to perhaps join me up here. Where, please? We have, as, as you know, the Department of City Planning is undergoing right now the public review of its City of Yes zoning for carbon neutrality proposal. And that includes the first step to address this phenomenon and arrest it. Plan YC also includes a commitment, and this is something that particularly Deputy Mayor Joshi is personally concerned about and excited about, and we are working on, to figure out how we can create low emission zones, all right? Low emission zones are something that have been done in Europe and most notably in London. Traditionally, they have been used to keep polluting vehicles out of city centers. What Plan YC identifies is the opportunity to devise low emission zones around hotspots in environmental justice areas. And in fact, Red Hook and Hunts Point are called out in Plan YC as the two places that we would most like to see a low emission zone. So that is, it is not, I wish I could say we had a silver bullet for it. We do not, but it is not quite true that, that we are not at all trying to address this phenomenon. And let me ask Daphne if she could talk a little bit about what.
I just, I just need to, I'm glad to hear about the low emission zone, but one hand seems to not understand what the other is doing. While we're contemplating low emission zones, the mayor's office, along with the EDC, thought it was great to strike a deal with a cruise company that brought the largest cruise ship into Red Hook, bringing thousands of additional trucks in addition to the last-mile logistics facilities, with no consideration for air quality, quality-of-life, infrastructure issues, or the climate for that matter. We can talk about the particulates and pollution that cruise ships already bring in. So what I'm, what I am desperate need of is for the agencies to truly come up with a comprehensive plan and look at the collective impacts of their decisions in environmental justice communities, not 10 years later, right now, because our community is suffering right now. And every day, we have a new facility and a new deal cut by this administration that does not consider the community, nor does it bring us in. So I would very much like us to be part of the conversation, not after the fact. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Aviles, for your, for your, for your good questions and your passion on the, on these, on these critical issues. I recognize Councilmember Brewer for questions.
Thank you very much. I have four different kinds of questions. I've been long proponent of purchasing locally. Now, that's not under DEP, but you mentioned it as one of the Plan NYC goals. So how does that, as a city, fit into purchasing from our local farms upstate, number one? Number two, obviously, we're all focused on City of Yes, carbon, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So the local community, will they be able to measure either the zoning and/or Plan NYC so they know that in my neighborhood, we are doing well compared to others or well compared to the city, that kind of thing? Obviously, we do that with monitoring of air. The Department of Health does it in terms of health indicators, and it's more complicated about what you're talking about, but would there be some way of doing that? Three, I'm a big proponent, I have gotten nowhere, on getting more schoolyards to be open to the public. Right now, 10 minutes, if you're not 10 minutes from a park, if you are, you can't get schoolyards to be open. So that's something, I mean, that would help some of the drainage issues, green issues, and so on and so forth, but I'm getting nowhere. So I want to know your position. And then finally, Jerry is a rock star in terms of noise, but I want to know what it is that you, now you mentioned other agencies should be involved with sirens, and we agree. I have a bill on the same topic for adding to the rumbler, not so much siren noise. So I wanted to know if you have any position at all on that topic, or how your agency would take a position on siren noise. Those are my four questions.
Okay. Thank you. I'll, let me take those, I think, in reverse order. So on, on your, your other intro related to rumblers, that is something that, you know, obviously, DEP does enforce the noise code. Currently, the noise code does not address those, and that is something that we will be happy to consult with our colleagues at PD and FDNY, et cetera, on, but not something that I claim any current expertise. One thing I will note, Councilmember, that no reason you should have noticed it, but something that we are doing at DEP is we are now recreating a direct report to raise the Bureau of Environmental Compliance, which handles the air and noise code enforcement. Currently, it's part of our overall Bureau of Sustainability. We are going back about a decade or so. We're going to create it as its own standalone bureau, and we are in the process of recruiting a new deputy commissioner who will report directly to me. My objective there is to find somebody who will think about this truly in a strategic way and who will wake up every day thinking about air and noise quality and how DEP can leverage its enforcement capability towards the objective of a quieter city and cleaner air.
Must be your work on a community board that got you to that point.
And I, and I thank the person who put me on that community board almost every morning.
Thank you very much.
Let's see. Sorry, now I've forgotten the other three questions I have to confess.
Schoolyards, data, and food. Schoolyards, data, and food.
Well, let me take food for 400, please. And the, one of the initiatives in Plan YC, and as, as the Chair's statement identified, we are now looking at the food carbon footprint of New York City as something that we have to manage. One of the interesting things we found, and it's just a point of awareness, is that food miles are nowhere near as important to the overall carbon impact of the food we consume as the food itself. So a vegetable from California, it turns out, is better for the environment than locally-raised beef, for example. But one initiative that we have in, in Plan YC that we will be working on through my agency is working with the Watershed Agricultural Council, which I know you're personally very familiar with, up in the watershed.
Been there, yeah.
Because we see the beginnings of the economic, the economics changing to encourage the farms in the watershed, where previously, they've tended to see their best economic returns through dairy farming and then beef farming. Increasingly, we think that, that farmers up there are seeing their best economic returns in truck farming and organic truck farming. That's obviously something that's of benefit to the city, and so we would, we will be working with Grow NYC and, and the WAC to see if there are ways that we can play a role in fostering that.
Great. And then with just data, how do we, how does the neighborhood measure, it's complicated, some of the things that you're talking about and obviously City of Yes on carbon, et cetera? It's a hard, like I said, we do measure some things, but I don't know if this could also be measured.
It is hard, and Ross, maybe you could speak to some of what we've done.
I'm a big data, as you are, very focused on data.
Yes. Now, in the past, we've tried to scale down the carbon inventory to the neighborhood or zip code level. I will say, the consumption-based carbon inventory that is an input into our new integrated carbon inventory does go down, I believe, to the zip code level or census tract.
Census tract.
Census tract level. But yeah, let me, let me ask Ross if you would just say a few words in response to the Councilmember's question.
Does that work? Okay. So, yeah, on, on data around, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, Ross McWinnie, Senior Advisor in the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice. As far as data granularity, I guess I'd call this, we have very good data, so building level data for the buildings over 25,000 square feet. So those make up about a third of citywide emissions, those large buildings by themselves. And we get that data annually, but we also know about monthly utility bills for those, that building set. As far as the citywide greenhouse gas emissions, we actually have emissions, or rather, energy consumption on a zip code level for most zip codes in the city. There are some that are obfuscated because of state privacy requirements. So we do have the data. Most of our analysis is on a, either building basis or citywide basis, but that we could do further analysis to get a sense of zip code level performance. So at least on buildings, that is there. I'd say as far as transportation's concerned, we rely quite a lot on modeling, and it's really not something that we can drill down into a zip code level. We might be able to get to a borough level on the transportation side.
Excuse me. Can you raise your hand so that we can swear you in?
Sorry.
Would you, would you, do you swear for him to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth today?
I do.
Thank you for that. I just think in order to get more people to buy in, the more data they have to be supportive, it's something to think about.
Great.
And then just finally, the schoolyards, Commissioner.
Councilmember, I apologize. I am not fully up to speed on where things are with schoolyards to playgrounds.
Well, they're nowhere, just in case you didn't know.
I will get back to you.
So I would love to get some support for getting my schoolyards to be more open. I'm not saying every schoolyard. If I had my brothers, it'd be every schoolyard. My brothers' trust for the public land would do all the schoolyards. But there's thousands of them, maybe hundreds, that are not open, and they, I think it would help with the bioswirl, it would help with, it would help with everything. We just need some money for the custodians. Thank you.
Thank you. So, thank you, Councilmember Brewer. I recognize Councilmember Wrestler for questions.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. It's good to see you and Director Cirillo. Thank you for joining us today. Can we just start with, when did Gail appoint you to the community board? Is that CB7? What are we talking about here? I don't know. I'm kidding. But I do want to learn more about this, because that abuses me.
And Lincoln, I think you need to get a little closer to the mic, too.
All right. I think we need a roster of all of Gail's appointments over the years and where they are now. But I did want to start with an area that's, I think, of great concern to many members of the council around RECs. But maybe to pull back a little bit, I think some of the trends we saw in the data points from the 2022 One NYC report, you know, with the previous administration, you know, called the Plan YC, showed that we were moving in the wrong direction on several key indicators around carbon neutrality and suggesting potentially we're not on track to meet our 2050 goals. There are obviously some, some good things coming, the federal investments, the CLCPA, new local projects that I hope will get us back on track. We obviously have a long time to get there, but one of, I mean, but I think we would all agree, the most important thing is to drive down our building emissions. And, you know, we are, I'm personally very concerned about how we can effectively limit the use of renewable energy credits. Our goal is not.
Sergeant, clock, please.
Oh, fair. Oh, is it not? Oh, good. That's because you just wanted me to talk all afternoon, because you know I'm happy to, Chair. But in all seriousness, when does DOB intend to issue additional rulemaking to limit RECs?
So Councilmember, first of all, you know, I will reiterate the fact that this administration is fully supportive of fully implementing Local Law 97. At the same time, we believe that the big prize in Local Law 97 is not the 2024 target, but it's the 2030 target, which is going to require the bulk of the mobilization and have the bulk of the benefit to the planet. And furthermore, we are deeply engaged, weekly and sometimes even from my calendar, daily basis, with wrestling with the difficulty of how to actually implement this ambitious law. And I will say, for anybody who thinks that it is simple, they are wrong.
Agreed.
For anybody who thinks that buildings are going to find it easy, some will, but some very much will not.
Agreed.
And so what we are really, as I have said many times, is trying to stick to the spirit of the bill's title, the law's title, which is the Climate Mobilization Act. And mobilization requires a multi-pronged process where you help people and you give them targets and you ensure that they understand consequences, and we intend to do that. Over the course of this summer, we will be coming out with our next set of proposed rules around Local Law 97 implementation. I have said, I have testified before this committee, that we will be seeking to define the Good Faith Effort Clause in that law to both help buildings that are doing the right thing, but also be very clear to buildings what they would need to do in order to receive any mercy, for lack of a better term. In terms of RECs, we are working right now with NYSERDA to understand what RECs really would mean for Local Law 97 compliance. Personally, I believe that the importance of RECs in Local Law 97 compliance has been vastly overstated by frankly, all parties in this discussion. There are some who want no restrictions on RECs. I think they are overestimating their value. There are some who want lots of restrictions on RECs. I think they are overestimating the risk that RECs pose. We are really focused primarily on what it takes to get those buildings, particularly the Class B and C office buildings, particularly the co-ops and condos and the rental apartment buildings. That's our main concern, what it takes to walk them through the multi-year process of understanding what they need to do, figuring out how to get the financing, getting big projects done, and reaching that 2030 standard.
All thing, everything you said was totally reasonable, and I appreciate the response. Agree. Look forward to seeing the proposed rules this summer. Understand that NYSERDA is working with you all on a report. Would love to be, for you to share whatever the findings are in that report as soon as you're able to, so we could begin to understand it as well. Agree with you, this is not going to be easy for everyone, but it's critically important that we provide the rules of the road to people as soon as possible. My concern, though, to be clear, was what the Urban Green Council found, which was that two-thirds of office buildings would be able to use RECs as they've been defined to date to not make any improvements on their buildings or further reduce their emissions to be able to comply with the law. That does not feel to me in the spirit of what we are working to achieve, which is a dramatic reduction in emissions in New York City. So look forward to working together more on that, recognizing my time is short, even though I got some extra time from a clock malfunction. Heat pumps. I was very surprised to see, if I scanned the report accurately, that the only reference to heat pump were the 30,000 that NYCHA is planning, which we're very excited about and appreciate NYCHA's creativity at what's at houses, and we hope to support them in making that pilot successful and expand, expand it as quickly as possible. But, you know, shelters, schools, municipal buildings, we're not focused on the implementation, the rapid implementation, the rapid installation of heat pumps in these buildings were, which I think can be game changers for us.
Well, Councilmember, I, I think in most cases, we did not seek to specify the specific interventions that we are looking for, but I'll cite a couple of items in, in Plan YC where heat pumps are relevant. First is actually the ambition, as I stated in my testimony, to work towards a maximum indoor temperature. One of the things that that. One of the things that that does, and you know, and if, if you did that in kind of a simplistic standalone approach, you're basically saying, oh, the administration is planning to mandate air conditioners for all residential units, right? Really, what we think makes it possible to contemplate a maximum indoor temperature is the fact that many apartment buildings, particularly affordable and rent-regulated apartment buildings, are going to comply with Local Law 97 through the use of window heat pumps. And those, of course, provide both heating and cooling, right? So I think that's one area where we see promise. A second is in public solar. Public solar is an initiative, you're probably aware of it. We're doing this very much jointly with Controller Lander. And in, and although its title is public solar, it really is about identifying how we can use the Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund money that we hope will come from Washington to help one to four family homeowners do the full electrification, and that's the induction stove tops, that's the heat pump, that's the rooftop solar, that's the battery, right? Because that's really where we need to go. Solar, to a certain extent, is the cream skimming, the way 10 or 15 years ago, we saw an unfortunate tendency of cream skimming of just companies coming in and changing light bulbs, doing the easy stuff and leaving the hard stuff undone. A lot of what drives our interest in public solar is that it can be used to promote that whole house redevelopment that will inevitably include heat pumps. And I'll, the final thing I'll cite, which I think is, is a place with, where heat pumps are relevant, is where we talk about the use of, or the objective of, of climate infrastructure on all city buildings. It's easy to assume that that means just solar on the roof, but we are going to be thinking much more holistically about those, that kind of infrastructure.
All good stuff. I think we're interested in the specific agency-oriented implementation around heat pumps in particular. I'm certainly very interested in that. I think it's going to be a very exciting opportunity and, you know, how we can use our, our public buildings and buildings that, that we're responsible for through contracting to set a model for the sector, to use our purchasing power to make a difference, I think is a huge opportunity. Chair, would I be allowed one more question or?
Uh, sure.
Last one.
One more. We have like a huge amount of witnesses that are going to testify.
Then I'll be quick on this one. I won't, I won't give you a, a long spiel.
No, but I, I like when members get in and they don't have to wait for me and they get to do their stuff and then go on to other important things.
I always appreciate the latitude that you give us on this committee, Chair Janaro, and the leadership that you provide. Excited about DEP's role around addressing flood issues in New York City. I think that's an appropriate area for you all to step up and, and excited to see you take on more. It seems inevitable that we're going to need some more aggressive tools at our disposal. And I'm just wondering, are you all considering charging businesses, residences for more storm, who are producing more stormwater for their extra runoff as a mitigating approach?
Thank you, Councilmember. So DEP is in the, the home stretch of a two-year-long sustainable rate study that we are intending to complete by the end of this calendar year. It has included public engagement, it has included a lot of expert input, and, and it asks a number of questions about whether DEP's relatively basic water charging approach right now, which is really just a multiple of how many gallons of water a given user consumes, whether it should become more complex. It includes hardship rates, which some cities have adopted for low-income residents. It also includes evaluating a stormwater rate, which a number of other cities have embraced, and we'll have more to say on that in the fall.
Thank you, Councilmember Wrestler. I appreciate your good questions as always. I recognize Councilmember Gutierrez for questions.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be respectful of the time. Commissioner, good to see you again, and I know I've said it before, but thank you for the time that you've spent in, in our district, walking along Knickerbocker. I know we have a lot more work to do there, but just wanted to, to raise you up. I have actually just one question and just depending on the response, maybe a follow-up. So, and forgive me, I haven't, I haven't read thoroughly the Plan NYC, I know. I mean, your testimony, I think I can get it from your testimony, it's all in here. But I, I do know that there is an emphasis on maximizing infrastructure on all city-owned property. And we have a package of bills that were passed in the previous administration, Renewable Rikers, where there is a mandate to reduce the population and turn this property over to city agencies like DCAST, potentially DEP, to really do, I think, what this plan is saying. But I don't, I don't know if there's a mention of, of Rikers in your plan, but we as, as advocates and of members who support this have been pushing back on DOC. The DOC Commissioner's been here, where he basically has said, we have, we have no plan to meet that mandate, that law, in the time that the legislation calls for, which is by 2027. And what we've been doing is saying that not only do we want to reduce the population, but the reality of what the intention of this space is supposed to be utilized for as designed for by the plan, as designed by advocates, as advocated by former detainees of Rikers. So it's not in the plan, and you can tell me if it is or isn't, but what is, what is the future of investing infrastructure in city-owned land if it's not at the Rikers site, which is a massive, massive site of city-owned land that is designed by, in law to do that? What, what can you tell me as far as what this administration is thinking about and what are ways that we can get it done? Because I'm, I'm sincerely concerned about the rate at which we're actually incarcerating more people and actually defying the intention of this law. Thank you.
I'll just jump in for a second before the Commissioner answers. Thank you for the good question. Um, you know, the Rikers closure, um, according to the Renewable Rikers Act is, is black letter law. You know, we haven't seen movement, you know, by the administration in that direction, so they're not, they're not meeting their milestones. I don't know that the Commissioner could speak for the totality of the administration regarding the whole Rikers issue overall, but, and so I, I, I think I'm going to kind of like refine the question in terms of the, you know, promise he sees in the full build-out of Renewable Rikers as envisioned by the law that was passed by this council in 2019. So I, I want to speak to the, you know, renewable potential of Rikers rather than on, on all of the other issues that surround, you know, the Rikers question. I, I think that's a, a fair question for the Commissioner to talk about.
I mean, I think you can ask him that question, but I feel like if, if you can respond to how I phrase it, that would be, that would be really great. Thank you, Chair.
Well, Councilmembers, as you might imagine, I have neither insight nor, nor anything much to say about the actual situation at Rikers right now. I defer entirely to, to my colleagues at the Department of Corrections on that. What I will tell you, and, and I will have to check again, but if, if there is no mention of the two plans that we are working on in accordance with the law, then that's merely an oversight. The Renewable Rikers study is underway as a joint effort between DCAST and MOC EJ. And we will have a report that according to the law, we will publish, or pursuant to the law, we will be publishing later this year. And my agency is fully at work on the DEP portion of the Renewable Rikers effort. I've been personally involved in that. I think it's a very exciting opportunity. The opportunities may or may not be quite what I think some of the advocates have imagined, but certainly the prospect of a large piece of land added to our water infrastructure is very exciting to us. I will also, and so we will have, we will be reporting on that in accordance with the law. And then I'll say finally, I think it's really important that as much as, yes, Rikers is a, a very visible large piece of city-owned land, there's a lot of city-owned land out there. And we are also, when we think about that initiative, very much thinking about rooftops and other city-owned pieces of property. So I think it's really important for us to think broadly about the opportunity.
Can I just, Chair, ask a follow-up question on the city-owned land?
Sure.
And thank you for that. Thank you, Chair. In my district, for example, because of the multiple rezonings in Williamsburg, for example, and even in Bushwick, we don't have a, we don't have a ton of large city-owned land. You'll, actually not too far from where we did a walk-through, you'll see a lot of just empty, empty lots that are small, that, that are city-owned. And in instances where they're owned by HPD specifically, they've, they've said that they're actually too small to build on. So I'm curious and kind of what is the, the benchmark for what you're looking at for capital investments? In a district like mine that has seen so many rezonings, we just don't have that much city-owned land, but the, the lots that we do have are, are small. I wouldn't say they're insignificant, but curious to see if there's a plan for, you know, a district like mine or, or my part of Bushwick where we're seeing these smaller lots that HPD is saying, you know, this is, this would only, we would only be able to build four to six units, which is apparently not enough, even though we're in a housing crisis. But kind of what is the plan for some of these smaller owned, city-owned lots? Thank you.
I'll, I'll just say, and then I'll ask my colleague to, to chime in, you know, there are lots of varieties of city-owned land. I'm personally not up on what a small lot strategy for this would be, but part of what we are doing and part of what we are trying to accomplish with climate budgeting is making sure that across the board, agencies are incentivized to think about climate in all of their decisions, including how they use their available land.
I'll just say quickly, we are looking to maximize every single available piece of city infrastructure to place, you know, this climate infrastructure. Julia, Julia on our team leads the clean energy work, so she might have some more to say about that.
And I think Samara's going to want to do her thing here.
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth today?
Yes. Julie Casparand, I'm the Deputy Director of the Clean Energy Team at MOC EJ. I would just say on, this is why we have the initiative listed as climate infrastructure as opposed to just like solar, which has been what we maybe investigated more in the past. We want to look at all of these different types of lots that might not be viable for housing or for larger buildings or for solar arrays, which we, you need a good amount of space for. So for some of the small lots, like we might be thinking about storage or climate infrastructure and more of like the stormwater management and green infrastructure spaces that can take runoff and, and be a suitable use for those locations. So we want to survey all of the lots, even if they're a little weird shape that doesn't work for, for a larger project.
Great. I'll give you a short list. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez. And, um, I think it's apropos that I put on the record now that Councilmember Nurse and I have, you know, sent a letter to the administration, you know, to the mayor, you know, calling for, you know, full compliance with the, you know, Renewable Rikers Law, which calls for the closure of Rikers by a date certain in 2027. And, you know, this is black letter law, the law is a law, and the mayor takes a note to uphold the law. So, uh, so that is a, you know, letter that myself as Chair of this committee and Sandy as, as Chair of the sanitation and solvays committee have put forward to the administration. And we're still awaiting a response, but just know that, Councilmember Gutierrez, that Sandy and I are fighting the fight to make sure that, that the full promise of the Renewable Rikers Law is fulfilled. There you go. How was that? And now I guess it's my turn. Okay. Let's see. Now my colleagues have done a lot of work for me. And on page three of your statement, Commissioner, the third paragraph, last sentence, you make, you make reference to launching a voluntary housing mobility and land act program. If you could just, you know, speak in a little more detail about that, that'd be, because this is, this is what it is. This is kind of where we have to go.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So what we commit to in Plan Y C is, as you say, setting up a voluntary program. We are, I, I hope in the final stages of identifying exactly where that will be housed. That's an internal conversation that's been going on within the administration for a little while now, but I'm optimistic we'll have, we'll have a decision before too long. The analysis part of it is funded by a million dollars in CDBG resilience money from the federal government that we got. And our intention, and, and this is one of the things that we've found through really good work by, by the MOC EJ team over the last several years, that most people will focus on what are you going to buy and how much money do you have to buy it? But in fact, the gating factor is, do you have the procedures in place to operate a program and to work with people who might be displaced by it? And so that's what we want to set up first. I liken it to creating the vessel before we try to fill it. And so over the next several months, we're going to be, be standing up and, and there may wind up being legislation, maybe at the city council, maybe at the state even level that are, that is necessary. We're figuring some of that out, to create that ongoing program so there can be standing offers to specific targeted locations that city agencies will identify as being either difficult or expensive or impossible to protect, at risk of frequent flooding, and where there is a use understood by the city. Because one of the things is we've understood, the mistakes made around the country in buyout programs, is if you don't know what you're going to do with the land, you have a real problem before you, in, in buying it. What we want to avoid is that this becomes a panacea where everybody who feels like they ought to be bought out gets bought out. That's not what we are talking about. Our rainfall ready map, for example, is a, an initial indicator of the kinds of places that we will be looking at. If we can't protect it through green infrastructure or hard infrastructure, then it becomes a viable buyout candidate. And the other way we will think about it is there may be locations that are frequently flooded, that if we turn those locations into stormwater infrastructure, they can protect the surrounding community. So to a certain extent, you might be sacrificing half a dozen or 10 homes to protect a surrounding community by building a blue belt or some other kind of infrastructure. That would be the kind of thing that we are envisioning with this program.
So now the last part of your answer kind of leads me to believe that some of the properties that might be part of this might be, well, inland and not, and not, and not coastal, if you can elaborate on that.
Well, that's correct. I mean, I, we all know that, that two years ago Hurricane Ida reminded us that flooding doesn't just happen from the ocean, right? It, it can happen from above. And to a certain extent, uh, the stormwater flooding is a little bit more tractable to this kind of solution, right?
Right.
It's of a, frankly, of a lower volume, right? When it's, when it's local floodwater as opposed to what's coming in from the ocean. But there's a lot of work to be done on this.
Yeah.
Our intention is to get it right rather than get it fast, but we are working with a sense of urgency.
Now, with the, with the properties, or, or, once you had like a tract that was bought out, would that become the domain of the Parks Department or how would that, how would that work?
Again, we are, we are figuring that out. I think, you know.
Because the whole idea is like, you don't want to let the property get overgrown and then it becomes an eyesore and then.
Correct. But I think it's also really important that in many cases, we prioritize property acquisition where there is a use for it, right?
Right.
It's not just a question of keeping people out of harm's way in a city as congested as this, where we need to make use of every acre of land.
Right.
We have to make sure that we are smartly acquiring property and putting it to work, not just leaving it fallow.
Right. We had discussions, you know, just earlier today before this meeting about the, you know, about the 30%, you know, tree canopy cover and trying to get us somewhere we are now and, you know, the value added of bringing more, you know, tree canopy cover to, you know, deal with the, you know, heat issues that are, you know, part of New York City and all of the, and having, you know, trees being like the, you know, the green assets that they are. Could you talk a little more about, about how we get from, you know, where we are now to where we can possibly be when we do a full build, build out of the tree canopy cover? I'm going to follow this up with something about invasive species too, just so you know that's coming.
Oh, all right. Good to know. So first of all, I'll point out, so right now, we estimate about 22% of the city has canopy cover.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Our target is 30. We think that much of that can be obtained through trees on public land, but it's really important to note that, and this is true in New York City, it's also true around the country and around the world, the biggest contribution to canopy expansion is not in planting new trees, it's actually in the natural and healthy growth of existing trees, right? Which is why preservation of existing, particularly mature existing trees, takes center stage in our strategy for canopy. There will be a maximum. There will be a maximum that we will get to on public land that is probably shy of 30%, and this is where we may have to think more creatively about how to help protect the trees that are on private property, because if those aren't maintained and allowed to grow, then we probably won't get to the 30% that we want.
And something that I'm, that I'm having draft now that I was never able to pass during my, you know, prior service at the council, was, was a bill on species that are, you know, truly invasive, and that, you know, caused a lot of problems. I don't want to, that's more like a Department of Parks thing, but, you know, I pledge to you to try to do what I can to work, to work with the administration so that we have an invasive, so we have an invasive species, you know, paradigm here in New York City that's similar to jurisdictions that surround us. Nassau County, Suffolk County, Westchester, Jersey, you know, they all have laws that make sure that, you know, native species are not, you know, propagated just by people going to the local garden center, or people having, you know, one landscape, folks that can just plant these species wherever they want. So it's just like, that's an area that I hope to work with the administration and with this effort to grow out the tree canopy cover. That's more of a statement, doesn't have a call for a reply, and... And it was, there was a member that had a question before about the EJ movement, and this is on page five of your statement, you talked about an EJ plan that was going to be a report of the first of its kind in the city. If you could give us a little more insight on that.
Well, I'll just say, and I'll, I'll ask Vicki to elaborate, MOC EJ was tasked by the council through law to do a two-part effort on environmental justice. First, a report to establish the baseline conditions and understand the history of environmental justice, injustice, and then a, and then a plan for how to address it. And that is something that we are actively working on at MOC EJ. Maybe Vicki, you could say more.
Yeah, just to elaborate on that, we are working on this plan with our environmental justice advisory board, working closely with EJ communities. Something that we didn't mention, when the report is released, we are going to be putting out a new mapping tool, an open data portal, that will pull together dozens of open data sets related to environmental justice concerns, so that policymakers, New Yorkers, anyone can go on this portal, type in your address, and get all of that information very quickly. So we're excited about that, and then the action plan process.
Right. Now, now, when I passed a local law to bring the New York City Panel on Climate Change back into existence, part of its portfolio was to look out for disadvantaged communities. And is there any nexus, you know, between this EJ plan that you're putting out and the New York City Panel on Climate Change? I mean, are they, is that working out? I mean, like, they're still doing their thing, right?
And we are working together. We do have an interagency group that meets regularly with the MPCC members. EJ, health, equity, these are all topics that have working groups and are discussed. So yes.
Okay, so they're doing what they're supposed to do. That's nice. Okay. More prepared question by staff, many of them already have been asked. Let's see what still... Staff wants me to put you on the spot about something, and I decline to do it, so. You owe me. Okay. And... Oh, and then, this is something that's come up in the news recently, people made a big deal about, you know, not only sea level rises, everyone has known about for a long time, but, you know, land subsidence, something that has been known sort of like in the, you know, inner circle for a while. And I, I, I think when this hit the news, there wasn't full appreciation of the fact that this is, you know, has been known as been, you know, part of the equation, if you could speak to that phenomenon and how it works, because also, you know, speaking, whereas, you know, sea level rise is, you know, universal, you know, land subsidence is, you know, depends upon like where you're standing, how that, you know, what the, you know, competency of the, you know, subsurface is. And so if you could speak to how that phenomenon has been, has been part of your sea level rise and resiliency planning, we'll just put that on the record.
Yeah, happy to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, so that article from a couple of weeks ago got a lot of attention, but it's actually important to recognize what that article was doing. It was not identifying that there was subsidence taking place in New York City, right? That is well-known, well-documented, and it is incorporated into all of the sea level rise models that the NPCC in New York City has been using since 2007, when we started looking at this question. So I think everybody should rest assured that the overall phenomenon is fully incorporated into all of our projections and planning that take sea level rise into account, because we're focused on sea level rise, frankly, from whatever reason.
Right.
Whether it's the water getting higher or the land getting lower. That article actually was an interesting academic exercise in trying to parse out how much of it is due to large-scale geological impacts, and how much of it is due to the weight of the buildings of New York City. That's really all that, that article was adding, and I don't at all mean to disrespect.
Right.
It was an interesting exercise, but I think the news media took it to mean this was the first time anybody had noticed this, and it was far from the first time that anybody had noticed it. So it is fully accounted for. We focus on sea level rise, that's a relative measure.
Yep.
So land subsidence is already in there.
Okay, great. We should have background music while I'm doing this. Okay, I'll just, I'll just read this verbatim, okay. Past long-term sustainability plans have aimed to meet specific target indicator values. However, this plan only aims to increase or decrease the value of these indicators. Are the plan's indicator targets sufficiently ambitious? Verbatim.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'm, maybe you could speak to that, Vicki. I don't, I think there may be a misread of what our appendix is trying to accomplish.
Yeah, it, it, it was...
So that's something I'd be happy to work with staff to discuss.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was about, that there's, if any member of the staff wants to go on the record and, and, and talk about what, what was intended to be captured by that question, I'm, if, Andrew, if you want to take your debut, it would be...
I'm happy to.
It's kind of a cool thing.
It's all the rules.
Yeah, I, the rules. I'm the rules, so. This is Andrew Boren, and he's gonna try to give some, some, some meat to that question.
All right. Thank you, Chair Gennaro. Hello, Commissioner, thank you for responding to my question. I believe in the indicators that are listed near the end of the appendix in a table. Each indicator has a target value, which is an increase or decrease beyond the present value. Past long-term sustainability plans did not have an increase or decrease target, but had a, you know, a listed target. So for example, a previous long-term sustainability plan might have said, we want to reduce the volume of CSOs to 400 million liters, or, you know, some number, but this plan just says, we would like to reduce the volume of CSOs. And so I just wanted to call attention to that fact and ask if the administration felt that the indicator targets could be more aggressive in the 2023 Plan NYC.
I think I see what you mean, and I will, I will observe that what we were trying to do in that indicators page in the appendix was actually summarize what was going on in, in the rest of the plan. Now, for example, on that one, you cite CSOs, yes, in the indicator section, we say decrease. Of course, in the plan itself, we have very concrete, pardon the expression, targets that are incorporated into our long-term control plan with the state for the 2040 timeframe, and then what we say in the plan is, we want to work towards zero by 2060. What I think, though, is really important is, is that part of what we are focused on here is actually the near-term implementation steps. I think one of the things, and of course, Plan YC, the original, which I'm quite proud of, did a lot of this, focused very much on where we need to get to, and that's important. Right now, there's a lot of relatively speaking agreement on where we ought to get to, right? We might want to say, well, zero by 2060, maybe it could be zero by 2050, or maybe it'll take zero by 2070. That's not the conversation we should be wasting time on right now, to be honest. We need to focus on how we get stuff done, so we're making progress in the right direction this year, next year, in the next five years, and that's really what we're trying to focus on here.
And as usual, Commissioner, your testimony was very, very comprehensive and answered a lot of the prepared questions that we had. We always appreciate how detailed your testimony is, and I just want to put on the record that I, you know, certainly appreciate the partnership that, you know, right before we, you know, started this hearing, I met with the Commissioner and staff from the administration about items that were already looking to crystallize into legislation so that they'd be, you know, part of what the city does in perpetuity, and, you know, we certainly appreciate that partnership. I, you know, sent out a memo, and next thing you know, everyone is, you know, convening to have a, to have a very substantive conversation, how about we can, you know, make local law that will, which is how we, which is, it was, just having this process was born out of the fact that we put it in local law, that we would, you know, continue to do this. And so certainly appreciate the partnership, certainly appreciate everyone from the administration being here, and all the good efforts, and this, I think should make everyone in the city feel better that, you know, this administration has a very deep commitment, you know, to the future of New York City, that it should be resilient, it should be, it should be safe, and we should grow, you know, green industries, and we should, you know, prosper along lines of excellence as outlined in this good book. So thank you very much, Commissioner, and members of, of the administration for your being here and all of your good work. And with that, I'm gonna take a three-minute recess, and then we're gonna hear public testimony, okay? So be back in three minutes, I'm gonna say goodbye to the Commissioner. What's that?
Sandy.
Oh, 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 okay. All right, no, no, no. Just when you thought...
I was here.
We have an encore. We, 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 we have an encore, so. Oh, Sandy too?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I mean, it's just, these are, we're all here already. I mean, we should do it. This is a hearing, what do we, we should, so, please, Alexa...
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Sorry, sorry to, to interrupt the recess.
I'm not doing another finale again.
Okay, I am.
I really did it, you know, I'm not doing...
We heard it.
That was pretty good, you know?
It was great. It was great. So I, you know, obviously, going back to representing a waterfront community, coastal resiliency is absolutely important to us, so I would love to hear more about what the timeline for the DEP is to create the Bureau of the Coastal Resiliency, and also if the consideration around coastal resiliency includes an activation beyond, you know, what we are seeing as a lot of major projects to move water, but very little in terms of, or just like people looking out at the water, and very little in terms of activating the coast for more, being able to use more boats. We saw Hurricane Sandy, there were very little landings that boats could actually help people move around in, so I'd like to know if the Coastal Resiliency Plan looks at also activating our coastline or creating places where activation is possible.
Thank you, Councilmember. So I'll say a couple of things on that. First of all, to your question about the timeline, so standing up a new bureau takes some thought, and so we have convened an interagency effort right now that just kicked off a week or so ago to identify which functions are best transferred to DEP, to this new bureau, which functions really should remain with some of the agencies that are currently handling it. As I said, it will always be an interagency effort, you can't do something like this in, in a, in a perfect silo. So that is something that I expect probably takes maybe eight to 10 weeks over the course of the summer. We have also been in touch with some outside experts about convening an ongoing way to bring in the extensive expertise that is in the New York City community about coastal resilience, something that I think we have the opportunity to do a lot more of, and that's, in some cases, people who would consider themselves advocates, in some cases, academics. It's very much in the spirit of a lot of the way we developed the original Plan YC, thinking about both advocates and, and academics and experts as sources of information to bring in. And then finally, in parallel to all of that, we are actively recruiting for the new deputy commissioner for the bureau, in fact, as recently as yesterday and as soon as tomorrow. I, I have conversations, we have been proactively reaching out across the country to potential sources of nominations or, or potential applicants, and that's something we really are thinking of as a national search. All of that, I guess in my, I will hope that we have some of that kind of fleshed out in about September. Hard to predict, especially with a senior search like that, quite how long it will take, but that's kind of the timeframe I have in my head. And then one of the questions that we are looking at in parallel is what we can get started without legislation, merely as an executive action, and what will require legislative or charter amendments. And I do expect, and this was something that is the chair mentioned, I do expect that the DEP section of the charter will need to be amended to incorporate coastal resilience. So that's on your timeline. Then in terms of waterfront activation, one thing I will cite is that what you're describing is fully in line with what we are trying to accomplish with climate-strong communities, which is thinking comprehensively about the set of opportunities, as well as thinking comprehensively about the set of risks, right? It's very easy just to think in a single-purpose mindset, I've got to deal with coastal inundation, that's a limited set, it may not be the full set of problems in the neighborhood, it may not be the full potential set of solutions, but if you're dealing with coastal inundation, a seawall really seems like the thing you want to focus on, and, and it may be, and it may not be, it may be incomplete. So that's a lot of what we are trying to do with the coastal, with climate-strong communities. And then I will point out that, that what you describe very much informed the city's input into the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers' harbor and tributary study. So we've been working very closely, I will add, with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, to give input to the Corps about their study, and one of our key points is that we cannot think about whatever we do... And one of our key points is that we cannot think about whatever we do to the shoreline to protect ourselves from coastal inundation as only working to prevent coastal inundation. We always have to think about our waterfront as a multipurpose asset, and whatever we do there has to serve multiple purposes, including waterfront access beyond just viewing, as you say. And I will put one more plug in, because I'm super proud of the work that my agency is doing at the Gowanus Canal, where, in fact, at one of our sites where we are building one of the two holding tanks for CSOs, we will have not one, but two access points for people to get kayaks and boats and other things into the canal.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that. I'm still, I'm delighted about the, what do you call them? The kayaks.
The access points, yeah.
Yes. I'm actually a little bit more concerned and wanted to know, I know these holding tanks have been a long process for the community, and they're desperately needed. And certainly, as you know, the geography there, Red Hook is very much at risk and deeply concerned about the upland zoning of Gowanus, given the geography and that, you know, the sewage. They're also wanting to know what kind of infrastructure improvements are going to be made within Red Hook, since it's a critical sewage point as well beyond the tanks. So, that was actually my follow-up question, but I'm delighted to hear definitely the use of, the consideration of multipurpose asset. We saw the problem of our city not having that vision across this coastline and how we failed in response to, I mean, I think failing all the time in response to emergencies. And I would just add, you know, the consideration of water freight, which is what we are seeing as a part solution to the last month facility piece, is activating this waterfront in multiple ways that kind of meet a healthier community. So, the sewage piece is definitely something in deep concern for us, and I would love to talk to you more offline about what that looks like for Red Hook and what we can be expecting as the developments are happening upline and the CSO. Upland, excuse me.
Of course, we'd be happy to dive in in a concentrated way on that. And I'll just add that one of the other things, and it's mentioned in Plan NYC, that DEP is working on is, and this will be a long process, but is a citywide stormwater resilience strategy. We expect to have the first discussion piece of that out by the end of the year. But one of the things that we have to wrestle with as a city is the mixture of strategies. Obviously, there's choices between green and gray, and we're always going to do green whenever it's possible, but also how much we want to protect against. Other cities that we look at around the country have, or around the world, have in some cases said, "Well, actually, we're going to design to accept this kind of flooding, because this kind of flooding, the building owner has to protect against, and the citywide infrastructure will only protect against more than that." And then, we have to talk about how much we are willing to pay for it, because stormwater infrastructure is going to be paid for through the water rate. And, you know, this administration has been working very hard, I have personally been working very hard, to make sure that we are collecting money from deadbeats who haven't paid their water bill, being generous to those who really can't afford to pay it and have fallen behind for legitimate reasons. But we've been doing that in order to prevent the water rate from rising dramatically, and stormwater infrastructure is paid for by the water bill. And so, we've got to think about those as multiple things to take into account.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Sandy, you had one more? What's that? Okay, okay. All right. Thank you again. Not going to do the whole thing all over again, but appreciate it, and thanks for that. Thank you for the encore of questions. That was very productive. We're going to take a three-minute recess, and we'll come back and hear public testimony.
Good afternoon, everybody. If everybody can please find their seats, we are ready to resume.
Thank you all very much for your patience. Okay, we're going to start with the public testimony. These are people who are here in person. They'll have presences. We asked people to keep it down in the back a little bit. First witness, Matthew, begins with the letter S, testifying on Intro 605. I can't make out the last name. And I'm not going to give out your address, which would identify you, but Matthew S? Testifying? Oh, he's gone? Okay. Esther? Regelson, yes, yes, yes. Testifying on Intro 898. Please.
Hi.
Yeah, just please state your name and commence with your testimony. And we're holding the public testimony to two minutes, but we look forward to whatever you have to say.
I'll try to be brief. My name is Esther Regelson, and I want to talk about air monitoring for a minute. It might be a little bit off topic from the bill, but I live at 109 Washington Street, a few blocks away. And the site next to me is 111 Washington Street, which has been an empty lot for quite a while. Before that, it was a parking deck with a, that had a gas tank underground that had been ruptured and is now a brownfield site. And construction began several weeks ago. I was worried about my health. I got an air monitor. And ever since they started the work next door, my air monitor has showed exceedances of particulate matter almost every day since the work started. I've talked to an alphabet soup, communicated with an alphabet soup of agencies, DEP, DEC, and DOH, and none of them seem to be able to shut this thing down. My particulate matter reads high even when my windows are closed. This did not happen before the construction started. When I spoke to the DOH, they said they monitor it conservatively, turning things off when there is any kind of exceedance. However, I will point out to you that what during the Canadian fires, when all air monitoring was reading high and my monitor was almost pinning the meter, they were still working outside next to us with no masks and impunity for whatever exceedances must have been happening on that site. How is it possible? I've talked to the DOH. They said I had a point, but they couldn't stop the work. It's impossible for a citizen to find ways to shut things down when it should be an emergency. I've dealt--
Why don't we do this?
Our councilman Marte has helped us. I have a lawyer, Joel Cufferman, is helping us. And we can't get this thing taken care of in a timely manner. And it's just a citywide problem.
Here's what we're gonna do. Now, I asked the administration to leave someone behind to hear the good testimony. We got Marty in the back from, what's that? Oh, a summer, right? A summer? Like the season? Okay, and summer is a representative of the administration. And I think now is the perfect time for you and the representative from the administration, you know, to have a conversation in the back of the room. And, you know, Marty was like, you know, intergovernmental guy. We'll figure out how we do this. So I think that is the best course of action. You got the administration sitting right here, and I'm telling them to give you the time of day, and they're gonna do that.
Okay, I appreciate that. But I do want to point out that this is a citywide systemic problem.
But right now, I'm interested about, I'm interested in you. That is not lost on me. But, you know, I, you know, right now, I want to take care of your situation. And so I, and your time is up now, but I think, so I want to have a conversation with the representatives from the administration right now, and they're willing to have that. I think that's, you didn't waste your time coming here today.
Okay, thank you. I just hope that the city will see to the problems in future throughout, throughout the city.
No, that's noted, and, you know, ever since the Canadian, yeah, it's, it's-- This issue has not escaped my attention.
Thank you.
Okay, you bet. And, yeah, it would be best to have the conversation in the back. No, just have it now, just real time. Just do it, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Some of you willing to meet with her? Okay, yeah, so.
Next, I'm going to call Nidia Leaf, Ryan Lee, and Daniel Chu.
Can I see the slip? Let me see the slip. No, but the one that the people are gonna speak now. No, the ones who you just called out. Oh, this, I want to know what they're testifying on. Yeah, I just want to get a sense of what bills you're gonna be testifying on. So in any order you wish, we're gonna do from, 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 from my left to my right. We'll start with the, we'll start with the young lady, and then we'll proceed down the line. Just state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for listening to my comments. My name is Nidia Leaf. I've lived most of my life in New York City. And I am a graduate of Hunter College in 1954. And the motto of Hunter is "Mi hico la futuri," which is Latin for "The Future Is My Concern." And I took that quite seriously. I've worked in the arts, Broadway production. And 45 years ago, I worked in California. I was the education director for a food cooperative promoting organic farming, which in those days was ridiculed. So I, I have an overlong view of the importance of water and healthy soil and the work that goes into protecting them. Tritium, as you know, you've probably already have heard testimony along the way in your EPA work. It's three parts of hydrogen, one part of oxygen. Water is two parts hydrogen, one of oxygen. They're so closely related. A teaspoon of tritium will contaminate a billion gallons of water. We cannot, we must not let any tritium go into the Hudson River. We are humans. There are also other creatures that live there. And the work that you're doing here is important on many levels. The decommissioning of nuclear plants takes a long time. Seventy five, I'm 90. Seventy-five years will go very quickly. Holtech can store the radioactive water on site for 75 years. It must not go into the Hudson. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Let me just state that our resolution, or, you know, my resolution, and along with Councilmember, Councilmember Aviles, you know, we, we had high hopes that the, that the, that the state legislature was not gonna, you know, water down the bills, which they did. And so, you know, we're going forward with our resolution anyway. We're just going to amend it because originally it was written to support the stronger bill that they're gonna do. And so, so it was gonna be like a supportive resolution for what they were doing. But now we're gonna slap them around because they decided to, you know, water it down. And it's not acceptable just to, it, it, it's, it's too, you know, narrowly drawn. And so we agree with you. This council agrees with you. So I want to thank you for coming forward and giving voice to that. I appreciate that.
Thank you, because what is happening here could be a template for all the decommissioning of nuclear plants in the United States.
I, I, this is, this is not lost on us, and so this is why we're--
Fight for it!
I mean, we're the city council. We just have a voice in this process. We're not, you know, shot callers. But the state legislature should have done the right thing, and we're gonna call them to account. And I have to move on to the next witness. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Brian. I'm the CEO and co-founder of Reaver Technologies. We specialize in making it easy for you to turn things off. And we do that is because everything, it's hard to turn appliances off. They're all leeching power when even, if you're not using it. So, you know, if you do what I do, you'll see all the rows and rows of empty cubicles draining power after people have left work. The treadmills that nobody use when the gym is shut off, the vending machines that are sitting there in a university campus when the students vacant on vacation. So all of this drains a lot of energy. What we've done is using artificial intelligence to track the usages of this and learn from the local grid to compute and tell people if you turn these devices off during certain times, without disrupting your lifestyle or business operations, you can reduce your carbon emissions by X, Y, and Z. And this has actually inspired people to act, and so I'm here to share the news in support of carbon accounting. I think what gets measured does get people involved in taking action and produce results. And we've seen that with what we've done across hotels, university campuses, offices, and even your homes. So thank you.
Thank you. And if you have a business card, where's Abby from my staff? Is Abby here? Yeah, Abby, if you could just take the business card of this gentleman. Do you, do you have a business card?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we would like to have it so we can look more into what, you know, the good work that you do. Thank you very much for, you know, supporting Intro, whatever it is that talks about the carbon accounting, right?
Yes.
I'm supposed to know the number, but I don't. So just Intro, whatever it is. Okay. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. Good to see you again, Chair General. My name is Daniel Chu, and I am the energy planner at the New York City Environmental Justice Alliance.
Pleasure to see you again.
Yeah, good seeing you. I'm here to speak on Intro 611, the Carbon Accounting Bill, and Intro 983, which is a solar canopy bill, built sponsored by Councilmember Brennan. We are encouraged to see that the city is proposing to do a carbon accounting. And we agree with the spirit of the bill, but we have some strong disagreements with the language of the bill and believe that it may harm the environmental justice communities that we serve. Our concerns with--
Wow, this is, this is getting interesting. Okay.
Yeah.
Glad you're here.
Our concern with Intro 611 broadly fall into two points. One is the use of 100-year global warming potential instead of the 20-year global warming potential as a scale, and the reliance on carbon offsets and carbon mitigation to account for net carbon emissions from city buildings. So the use of GLOP 100 is inconsistent with the state's accounting for CO2 equivalents, which uses the global warming potential of a 20-year scale. The state's climate law uses the 20-year scale, and it intentionally chooses that because it is what all science has said has been an accurate account for methane emissions, which traps 85 times more heat than carbon dioxide and only does, only traps 25 times more heat than carbon dioxide on 100-year scale. So we're discounting methane emissions from natural gas and other fuel sources significantly if we use the GLOP 100 scale as proposed by this bill. And it would only make extreme weather events more frequent, you know, summer is hotter, which, you know, disproportionately harms the environmental justice communities that we serve. Given that most of the city's reliance, operations rely on methane and methane gas, the 100-year timeframe will severely underestimate the impact that the city's emissions have, especially from operations like buildings and transportation. It could also extend the city's dependency on these gases and undermine our emission reduction goal, which is, I believe, 80 by 100. And we strongly oppose any effort to undermine the CLCPA, which means that we would hope to see changes to the language of this bill so that it aligns with the state climate law. We're also very concerned about using carbon offsets and carbon mitigation technologies. We believe these are false solutions, and so far to date, there has been no academic study proving that carbon offset is actually working. In fact, most of the carbon offset studies have shown that up to 90% of carbon offset reported globally to date are useless, essentially. So using carbon offsets and carbon mitigation technologies to account for our net carbon emissions is very concerning for us, and it actually will not reduce a lot of greenhouse gas emissions that we are offsetting, quote unquote. My full testimony has been written and submitted to the council, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. I was gonna ask to make sure that we had the full record of your statement you sent in to the council.
Yeah, I believe I already sent it.
Okay, well, I'm glad that that has happened. And very appreciative that you all were here, and, you know, say hi to Eddie for me, okay?
Of course, thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Emily Walter. You wanna call it panels? Want to panel people? Emily Walter and Yuwashi Rangan. Hope I'm saying that right. What was I saying? Cristobal? Yeah, there couldn't be too many Cristobals here, so I can't, I can't make out the last name. And Joel Cufferman from Environmental Law and Justice. So we're gonna take the witnesses in the order that I called them. Who's Emily? Okay. Oh, from, from, from Natural Areas Conservancy, right?
Correct.
Okay. Emily?
All right.
The floor is yours.
My name is Emily Walker, and I am the Senior Manager of External Affairs of the Natural Areas Conservancy. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today about the 2023 Plan YC report. Our comments today are limited to Plan YC goals that relate to the management and care of our city's natural areas. While Plan YC seeks to identify bold solutions, we want to note that there are existing frameworks for caring for the 12,000 acres of natural areas under the jurisdiction of NYC Parks, all of which remain underfunded. To put this into perspective, natural areas comprise fully one-third of our city park system, yet typically receive little more than 0.7% of the NYC Parks' expense budget for management and care. We are proud to have co-created management frameworks for forests, wetlands, and trails with NYC Parks, which each set a long-term vision and a detailed roadmap for the care of this critical public infrastructure. However, the city has failed to fully invest in these plans. Our increasing reliance on inconsistent and unassured levels of single-year funding is making it impossible for our colleagues at NYC Parks to effectively move these complex multi-year projects forward. Funding this work would have a tremendous impact in implementing Plan YC goals as they relate to wetlands and forested natural areas. We were thrilled that the release of Plan YC coincided with the mayor baselining 2.4 million in the FY24 exec budget toward connecting and formalizing over 300 miles of nature trails in our parks. This support will improve access to nature for millions of New Yorkers, increase public programming, and create new opportunities for community and volunteer engagement across dozens of parks. Unfortunately, we want to note that if the FY23 funding for natural areas is not renewed for FY24, the seasonal staff that are currently funded to engage in forest restoration, maintenance, and plantings will be terminated at the end of June, and the work of managing forests across more than 35 parks will come to a halt. We believe this stands in direct opposition to the city's sustainability goals as outlined in Plan YC. Finally, as a proud member of the Leadership Committee of the Forest for All NYC Coalition, we were pleased to see the 30% canopy goal for our urban forest uplifted in Plan YC. Earlier this week, we testified in favor of Intros 1065 and 66, but remind the council that urgent protection of our existing canopy is needed. I do want to note that 5 million of the city's 7 million trees are in natural areas, and these 5 million trees trap 70% of the city's carbon, but we are not funding them. With that, I would like to thank the council for letting me speak today, and I will finish with that.
Thank you. Thank you, Emily. It's our, it's our pleasure to have you speak. And we want to, I, I want to enlist your, you know, your partnership when I push for my bill on invasive species. And so we're gonna come calling because I'm sure this is something of interest to you. And, you know, people don't really get the whole impact of invasive species. And I have a strong feeling that you and the Natural Areas Conservancy would be great partners with us on that. And so I'm going to direct, you know, committee staff on the, on, you know, to keep them in the loop on what we're doing regarding invasive species. And when we do the bill and we're consulting with stakeholders, I'm talking to staff now, you know, we gotta talk to Emily and this organization. I gave this to you, Andrew. Don't lose it, okay?
I have a copy.
You have a copy. Okay. Thank you, Emily. We're putting you to work. You showed up. Okay. That's Emily. Looks like--
Erwashi.
Okay, yes. And the last name, Rangan? Okay, a pleasure, a pleasure. Sorry, I didn't, you know, you have a--
It's long and complicated.
No, no, just, I, yeah, I think it's my glasses.
It's all good. Hi, my name's Erwashi Rangan. I am a longtime resident and homeowner of New York City. I'm a mom of two that go to public school here in New York City, lived here for decades. I'm also an avid paddler in the Hudson River. And I am also a toxicologist and environmental health scientist. I was the former Director of Safety and Sustainability for Consumer Reports for 17 years, which is just up the river here in Yonkers.
Wow.
And I'm here today to talk about Resolution 605 and thanking the chair for putting this bill through and the importance of us actually passing this resolution. I'd like to start by just saying some of the arcane notions of toxicology. The dose makes the poison, for example. Or where we lack proof of harm, it is therefore safe. These are complete misconceptions that go on in toxicology and in the way we form policies around toxics that we release into our environment. Tritium is an, is a radioactive agent. It is a beta emitter. While it is not as strong as, say, gamma radiation, we know that it's all about where it is, where it can emit its radiation in order to cause toxicity. The problem with tritium is not just whether it's going to penetrate people's bodies, but people who are in the river, recreating in the river, breathing on the river, ingesting or swimming in the river, any type of other exposure where you might have inhalation, ingestion, dermal exposure. These are critical exposure pathways that need to be assessed when it comes to the risks of tritium. I do have a study from the Fukushima disaster that talks about tritium specifically and the management of that in the waterways. It's critical when we have an unnecessary risk like this that we do not take this risk by adding to the public health's risk. Passing this resolution is really a vote for public health rather than the faulty safety assumptions that Holtech has used in order to push through this dumping of tritium in the Hudson River.
Well, thank you very much for your compelling testimony. And it only makes us more inspired to make sure that we do whatever we can to get them to step up and not to step back, as they did, as you well know.
Absolutely.
So thank you. Thank you. Cristobal.
Thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to be here and for your support for this bill.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Cristobal Vivar. I am from Mexico, and I've lived here for 20-something years. I love the nature of New York City. My, my view of New York is very bucolic. It's all about nature. So I'm gonna read because I'm a terrible speaker. Well, as New Yorkers, we are increasingly recognizing that we are surrounded by a magnificent, naturally watery environment. During the pandemic, I swam for the first time in the Hudson River. Since then, I have become one of thousands who engage in recreation activities in the Hudson, even circumnavigating Manhattan on a paddleboard, with Erwashi, by the way. An incredible adventure made possible in part by the tidal currents that flow in both directions, something that would make the radiation go up and down, up and down, very dangerous.
Yeah, there's some currents in there that I wouldn't advise, you know.
It's fun. I recommend it. Well, for swimming, not for radiation. Well, this extraordinary and beautiful experience is something I want others to enjoy, too. Unfortunately, and this is why I'm talking about this, when I talk about this, when I share my experience with most people, they react in horror, as if I was telling them a terrible thing. What happens is that they know the Hudson for being very polluted from decades ago. It's no longer like this. And the reason for this is the protective, protective legislation and the incredible efforts by people like, well, organizations like Riverkeeper that have made the river so much cleaner right now. You know, there's so much more wildlife now in the, in the river, whales, dolphins, seals.
Right.
Atlantic esturgeon, which is making a resurgence, and it's an endangered species. And it, this, if Holtek releases this, it would set a terrible precedent. It would be going back decades.
Yeah, we're certainly doing everything we can, you know, to make sure that that doesn't happen. And, and I go back with the Hudson, back with the, you know, with the PBC issue with, you know, PCBs, and we had the, this is, I don't know, 30 years ago, whatever. Yeah, when I was, I was a staff member here. No, it was about 25 years ago. And the Chair of this committee met with the council member who was putting forward, like, the PCB resolution, Gifford Miller before he was Speaker, and the Chair of this committee, Stan Michaels, and Jack Welch was Chair of GE at the time, and Head of NBC, the network. And I think it's important that I put this on the record. And we had a meeting with him, and he essentially, he said, "Look, I'm not just the Chair of GE. I'm also the President of NBC." And Gifford Miller, you know, you know, you want to have a political career. It's just like, you better watch it because I run NBC." And it was very, you know, it was, it wasn't a veiled threat. It was just like an overt threat. And, and then Welch and his people left the room. And I didn't know how Gifford, he was a young guy, you know, his whole political, you know, future ahead of him. And Stan, who's older, you know, sort of at the end of his career. He was the Chair, but Gifford was the guy who wanted to put this forward. And so, so Welch and his people left the room, and Stan Michaels, the Chair, goes to Gifford and says, "What do you want to do?" You know, like a you. And Gifford was just like, "I want to do this 10 times now," you know what I mean? It's just like, for him to come down here and to look at me and to, you know, to wag his finger at me and, you know, threaten me with what he's going to do with my career, like in the media, you know, the heck with him and the horse he came in on. And so, fearless, you know, and so I always appreciated Gifford, you know, not only, I did then. I was a staff member. I was only allowed to go to the meeting if I wasn't going to say anything, you know, I wasn't allowed to talk. And, and, yeah, Gifford came out swinging, and, you know, we did that, and sort of like the rest is history. Like, not a great history, but that was nice to see people take a stand. And we're going to take a stand on behalf of the issue that you care about, and we'll do whatever we can from our little perch, and just like you're doing.
Thank you. As you know, they said.
I wanted to put that on the record that people should know that, you know, that people who pollute like this, who have a lot of power, have no problem whatsoever just blatantly threatening people, that they have the ability to, like, do things to them. And, and a lot of people just cave. He's a young guy. I didn't even, I didn't even think Gifford was 30 then. And, you know, here, you know, here he is being threatened by the Chair of GE and the President of NBC. And he was like, "This guy can go to hell," you know, and so.
Mr. Chair, I think, just to emphasize that you're 100% correct. And when it comes to these big corporations that are behind these pollutants that are going in, and they own multiple entities, you are in fact correct. And I'll take it even a further degree. When we did bisphenol A advocacy work at Consumer Reports, that industry is, was, it's the petroleum industry. And to your point, media networks are owned by petroleum industry, NBC. And then people won't even cover these issues because there's so many conflicts of interest. And I'll just say, I'm so grateful for groups like Food and Water Watch and Riverkeeper that are here that help organize the public in order to be able to bring this forward because if we didn't, nobody else would. I just wanted to say one final.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I'll give you a little bit of latitude because you seem very nice.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. And I'll say one thing, just it helps give you all some precedence, but that exit sign, for example, the kind of glow in the dark, uses things like tritium to work with phosphor to make that glow in the dark. So when the electricity runs out and that thing is glowing, it's because of tritium. When we dispose of exit signs, the Environmental Protection Agency has regulations around how you dispose of that. You can't just throw it in a river. They are protected right now so that tritium can't be released from there. And when we dispose of them, they must be disposed of according to federal regulations. It shouldn't be any different for a decommissioned nuclear plant and a recreational waterway next to it. You shouldn't be able to dump it in there.
Thank you, thank you. I'm not going to walk under that thing now.
Okay, and as you know, we're under threat before August. They can just dump it anytime, they say. And we're, yesterday, we were paddling in the river, you know? We don't know when this is going to happen, which it won't, right?
Well, the state did do their bill, did they not? So.
Yes.
Has that passed? Is it signed? Or?
It was 62 to 0 through the Senate, but it didn't, the Speaker didn't take it to the floor, so it didn't get a.
Yeah, but certainly, you know, DEC, which I was former Deputy Commissioner of, they have regulatory authority here, and they could, and so what have they done?
I don't know if anyone in this room has an answer to that, but that's a very good question.
Yeah, and so. They do have the power in terms of water certification. DEC has the power to stop this.
Yeah.
According to regulations, and they're not. So, and I think that's what the city.
Yeah, because let me just make a note to staff of the committee to follow up with. What is the status of, because they had the bill, and then they watered it down, and it passed one House unanimously. The other House didn't take it up. That leaves it presumably in the hands of the appropriate regulatory agency, which would be the state DEC. We should take a look at that, and if DEC is not doing anything, we should, I mean, I used to work there. I used to work for the, like, the, the Commissioner who's there now is the Commissioner when I served as a Deputy Commissioner, but I don't care, you know what I mean? Whatever. So Andrew, you can find out, like, what they're up to.
They do have the power to stop it.
Pardon?
Under the water certification determination, they have the power to stop.
Yeah, I, I, I know we have the power to regulate all kinds of, I mean, I wasn't on the regulatory side of DEC, but being a Deputy Commissioner, I pretty much know what they do. And so I'm tasking Andrew with, you know, looking that up. And so with that, that's a great entree to your testimony, Joel. Just that Joel is a frequent flyer of this committee, and we look forward to your good testimony.
Thank you very much. I seem to have the record of being the last speaker.
No, we have more, we have more witnesses. We didn't, you know.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah.
I really commend the 640, the languages in terms of air monitoring. It's really, really good. But it doesn't go far enough. The way the city is.
Talking about Avila's bill, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. The way it's working now is that by not having sufficient testing and monitoring, this is a monitor that costs $300 that goes down to 0.1 parts per million, right? This is the monitor that's in Esther Regelson's apartment, but the city is relying on monitors on a grid, okay? And you're talking about six blocks or 10 blocks or 20 blocks. All that data that we're talking about today is giving an alibi to all the bad sites that are generating harmful emissions that are out there. What we're asking for, and we authorized this before, is that the city place monitors around the site, around the brownfield site, around a construction site or excavation, to have enough data to make those people stop. Right now, the way the city is set up with their monitoring is offering an alibi, all right? When people like Esther getting hit with that stuff that's coming into their apartment, Department of Health, DEP, did not test inside their, their places. They rely on the monitors that are hired by the contractors, and many, many times, we find out that they're not even giving correct information, let in enough sufficient information.
So here's what I want you to do. So you have the bill, right? You've got Avila's bill. Do you have it?
I have the bill. I'm just saying that this.
No, 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 no. Here's what I want you, because you're a smart guy. And so you should take the bill, and if you don't have the bill, then staff can give you the bill, and mark it up and, and say what you want the bill to say.
Okay.
I mean, I'm giving you a homework assignment because like.
I got it, but, but we testified about this before. I, I.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, I, like, the, you know, something that would be helpful when someone like yourself, who has got, you know, legal background, been doing this stuff for, you know, a generation, you know, to the extent that you can, you know, put language in the bill that you think needs to be there to, you know, in your view, make the bill all it needs to be, we're just asking you to, to do that, if you want.
No, I do, but I also want to get on the record that part of the problem is that when there's an exceedance, what's, what happens is the city comes in and gives a fine. It does not stop the, the, the bad deleterious action from going on. The city's owed $2 billion in uncollected fines, all right? So I think that should also give you.
You should, and also feel free to give, you know, any kind of, separate and apart from the bill, you know, any kind of regulatory, you know, enforcement or whatever actions you think just should be part of. And, you know, that can be feedstock into an oversight hearing that we may have on the topic you're talking about right now, about, you know, particular matter from, you know, construction sites or whatever. Who's to say we're not going to have a, an oversight committee on, an oversight hearing on that? I may decide to do that. And so to the extent that you give us that information, too, because the staff here takes all this stuff. And so we sit around like, what's the next hearing we're going to do and, and whatever? And it's like, whoa, we got this stuff on, there's, you know, construction going around all over the city, and this particular matter is not being, you know, it, 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 it's either not being enforced. If it isn't forced, they get a violation, which is like no one ever collects. And this is the kind of thing that we like to know so that we can be the best spokesperson for people in the community who are suffering but don't have the ability, like you on this panel, to really, you know, crystallize that in a way that can, you know, give us the feedstock to make it into a hearing and have a robust discussion about it.
But also I want to point out that her particular site, it was someone from DEP, a DEP Inspector, inspected that site, issued a violation because of his visual dust. We asked that person if they knew that it was a New York State DEC brownfield site. She did not know. The city is sending in inspectors without even knowing what the sites are, all right? I just want to say something. It's, I think it requires your immediate attention, not for a future study, to ask, "How could the city, DEP, and this committee allow inspectors to go in without the right protection and to inspect and not even knowing that it's a brownfield site, it's a toxic site?" So it's not just the PM 2.5.
Right.
It's the SVOCs and VOCs that are going into her apartment. And yet, when we called up DEP, they actually admitted that all they could do is just to refine. They can't stop that work, okay?
Here's what we'll do. I, I can guarantee you almost, I can guarantee you the state was not, was not a state brownfield site. It was probably done on the city's brownfield program, which I created because 75 to 80% of the brownfield sites in New York City are caused by fill, you know, are caused by, you know, contaminated fill, which does not qualify one for the state brownfields program.
No, it's a state brownfield site. I'll give you the number.
Oh, okay.
And also, it's three blocks from the World Trade Center. There's World Trade Center dust, and, and I just also say, Esther, I would, I'd like to say.
I don't want to have a debate. I just want you to provide us all information.
I just want to say, the urgency is there, and I really take exception that it's just going to be pushed off. We have nauseous dust affecting people on the World Trade Center clean, you know, area.
Joe, I'm not the bad guy here. I'm not the bad guy here.
Hold on one second. I just want to say something. Why is, is that, is nothing has stopped these people from doing it. The city is offering an alibi by having these hearings and letting DEP tell you that they're working on it and they're doing, they want to increase air monitoring. They're not telling us what's going into people's homes next, next to it, okay? And DEP can't even tell us if it's on a DEC site or not, whether it's a city list or not. So there's a major over, there's a problem here. Wednesday was, the city says, everyone, the air is the worst in the whole, whole country. We couldn't get them to stop construction and producing more dust that's going out, all right? I'm just saying.
Joe, we got it. You know, staff has it. We'll work with the administration. You know, we're not the, you know, we're not the executive side of government. I'm not going to debate this. You put your stuff on the record. The administration is here, you know, listening to every word you say. And, you know, we'll try to move that forward, particularly, this is state brownfield site, but I'm very involved in brownfields because I created, like, the city program, the only municipal brownfield program of its kind in the country. And with that, that's going to be the last word, and because we got to move on to the next panel. But I love you.
Okay.
Okay.
But they're using the brownfield label as, as an excuse for continuing their activity.
I. Next panel.
We have all of these checkmarks for the, for the people who are in person.
Okay, okay. No, no, but the first one, first one would be, first one would be Daniel, right?
Daniel Chu.
Yeah. Daniel Chu, New York City Environmental Justice Alliance. We heard him, okay. Eunice. Eunice Ko.
Yeah, where are the slips? Because, you know, we've been using those to track if he's already gone.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't have any more slips.
Oh, you don't have more slips?
Nope.
Okay, well.
Don't we make witnesses fill out slips anymore? Like, what are we doing? I don't understand the way we have this. We, we do our stuff, and we don't care who hears, you know? I mean, we're just trying to figure this out. I mean, I have no shame, you know? I'm just trying to figure this out. And so who are we hearing from?
Eunice Ko.
Eunice Ko, okay. Do I have a slip for Eunice?
There is a slip.
Okay.
She filled out a slip.
I always like the slip. We're very informal here. Okay, but she's sitting here, and, and why don't, why don't we take her a good testimony? And if you could try to organize the witness slips, that'd be great. Eunice.
Yes. Good afternoon, Chair Janero. My name is Eunice Ko, and I'm the Deputy Director at the New York City Environmental Justice Alliance. Founded in 1991, Nija is a nonprofit citywide membership network linking 13 grassroots organizations for low-income neighborhoods and communities of color across all the five boroughs in their struggle for environmental justice. Over 70%, sorry, 76% of people living in our members' neighborhoods are BIPOC. This week, the city is recovering from orange skies, red moons, and choking smoke from the raging Canadian wildfires. With no timely notice and sufficient communications and planning from the city, people noticed they were having trouble breathing, getting headaches, and having other respiratory issues. New York City residents were again largely left on their own, and of course, those most vulnerable, like the unhoused and essential workers, suffer the most consequences. A few months ago, an extreme rain event left the BQE closed and flooded, along with some buses and roadways. We're now heading into the summer, one where experts warn could be the hottest for many, when heatwaves disproportionately kill black and brown New Yorkers and will triple and potentially quadruple by the 2050s, according to the MPCC. Each summer, an estimated 370 New Yorkers die prematurely because of hot weather in New York City, and we can only expect this to increase. The climate crisis is, is here, and we have the New York City Chief Climate Officer going around saying that the city won't be able to protect and prepare all New Yorkers, as if we should all just accept the fact that it's okay for some people to die from poor planning and government negligence, which reads that the most vulnerable, low-income communities and communities of color will be left to fend for themselves, as always, as our city gets hotter and wetter. The sustainability plan is called Plan NYC: Getting Sustainability Done, a riff of Mayor Adams' favorite phrase, "Getting Stuff Done." Now, there are usually three critical pieces needed to get something done well: a budget, outcomes, and a timetable with milestones and targets. On the budget, Plan NYC highlighted a lot of commitments that would require state and federal funding to get done. While the city should absolutely be making full use of unprecedented federal and state funding, it cannot solely rely on this once-in-a-lifetime funding opportunity to sustain the massive climate and environmental changes and upgrades the city needs to make to make our infrastructure, assets, and neighborhoods climate-ready. The city needs to leverage its money for sustained action, be more self-sufficient, and find new funding streams for projects, policies, and programs that are going to make our city more sustainable and resilient, prioritizing that investment, EJ Communities. There are a few things in Plan NYC that were funded by the city, such as climate-strong communities, but it's not. communities, but it's not enough. For some other initiatives, there was no identified funding, which raises again the question of how we're getting this done. Local on 97 and on city buildings, we saw only two DOE facilities and five DSNY garages in the 10-year capital budget strategy. Is that it? On outcomes, there are a lot of short-term benefits and goals focused on outputs, but no associated outcomes and long-term goals that the city could evaluate and measure progress against. While there was mention of prioritizing EJ communities, it was unclear how, when, and which communities would be prioritized and what the expected outcomes for these communities would be. The plan didn't connect or state the amount of risk reduction associated with any of the actions or identify the level of scaling of the pilot programs they mentioned that are needed to meet the increasing climate risks. On timetable, there was no clear timeline with interim milestones for a lot of these short-term actions. For example, 30% citywide tree canopy commitment, but by when? When you're cutting agency budgets and breaking 1% budget promise to the Parks Department, this goal feels absolutely meaningless. More importantly, there was no vision tying together these short-term actions and outputs, and no indication of where we're headed as a city. I'm almost done. There are a lot of things in this, other things in this plan that lead me to believe this administration is not serious about addressing climate change. The plan's reliance on technology for climate solutions and the goal to maximize biogas production through public-private partnership leaves the door open for false solutions and the continued use of fossil fuel infrastructure. Technology solutions such as carbon capture and aerobic digestion produce more greenhouse gas emissions, particularly methane in the case of anaerobic digestion, which my colleague mentioned burns and has eight times the warming effect and damaging effects of carbon dioxide. Expansion of anaerobic digestion development at wastewater resource recovery facilities to generate so-called renewable natural gas is a concerning direction that harms EJ communities nearby by perpetuating greenhouse gas and CO2 emissions that cause increased asthma rates and other cardiovascular disease. These communities are also going to witness increased truck traffic for material transport and increased energy bills, despite utilities, sorry, piping free natural gas generated by these WRFs. It's extremely concerning, there was no mention of renewable rikers in this plan and how it fits in a larger vision for restorative justice and resilient renewable energy in the city, given the city's supposedly undertaking the feasibility studies that are required by the Renewable Rikers Act. Lastly, the plan doesn't address issues related to climate that significantly impact EJ communities, related issues such as affordable housing and displacement. Level of ambition in this plan isn't commensurate with the scale of the crisis at hand.
I have to ask you this, some of them.
Yeah, I will. The things that are couched as ambitious are largely things we could do today if we had the commitment and political will. The city can't put New Yorkers in a position to respond and adapt to climate change on their own, because it means the most vulnerable will suffer the most. This is about leadership and not about educating people about flood insurance and a backwater valve pilot program, all these things are good, we need to see city leadership, and that is what we're lacking. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, is the Environmental Justice Alliance part of the Plan YC Advisory Board?
No, we were not, not asked to participate.
So who from the EJ community is on it? Or is it like?
Um, I think there were some people, like, I think if we saw We Act, I'm not exactly sure what that Advisory Board, the composition as of late.
Okay, but you folks were not part of it, interesting.
That's correct.
Okay, well, thank you for putting all this good testimony on the record, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Say hi to Eddie.
Well, thank you.
You bet, okay. We have the next witness here. People are killing me with this handwriting, killing me. Alex from Food and Water Watch, last name begins with a B. What's that? Oh, okay. What's your last name?
No.
Talk on the mic. You got to turn the mic on, the light.
Sorry, it's Beecham.
Okay, oh, there you go.
It looks like Beauchamp, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great, okay. Food and Water Watch, go get them.
Yeah, I'll be brief, because a lot of folks have already spoken in favor of this resolution, but we're here, I'm Alex Beecham with Food and Water Watch, we're here to support Resolution 605, to stop the dumping of radioactive waste in the Hudson River. This is an urgent threat, right? Holtech is the company that owns the decommissioning, they're trying to do this this August.
Well aware, well aware.
Need to get it done, right? So I won't bore you with those details, I think I might be able to be somewhat helpful, there's some back and forth about the status of the bill at the state level, so.
Yeah, help us out.
Yeah, we've been working this pretty hard, so the Senate passed it 62-0, as I think Ervashi mentioned earlier.
Yep.
The Assembly failed to take it up, they're back next week, though, right? They're there Tuesday, Wednesday, you have this kind of like.
Oh, right, right.
Yeah, it's an odd special session that I think is frankly about the Assembly running out of time, there's not really that much controversial stuff on the agenda. What is on the agenda, though, is this bill, so I think, you know, it's not done, we're going to fight to pass it next week, but presuming that that is a good sign, I think it's, it's very much in play that we could get it done, and if we do get it done, it is not at all clear what Governor Hochul will do, right? So, all that to say, the resolution here is really timely, because hopefully we get it done, and if we do get it done, we don't know what to go.
I'm going to kind of go back and forth a little bit.
Sure, yeah.
And, you know, don't worry about the time, I can do what I want, but, so, that doesn't, I mean, this is not going to get passed by the council like we've got our last stated meeting of the summer.
Right.
I mean, our last stated meeting before the summer, well, we have one stated meeting in July, one stated meeting, but, you know, like, it's got to be done now. And so, is Naby here? Naby's here, right? Okay. So, I want you to work with Alex once he steps down, and we should do a statement, like, you know, I, as chair of this committee, should do a statement, calling upon the, you know, calling upon the Assembly hasn't taken it up, right?
Yeah.
And they're coming back next week, so.
They're coming back next week, and it's on the agenda.
Right, okay, so.
They put out an agenda that tells.
So, you know, so we should, so, it was on the agenda, does that mean like in Albany Parlance that it's going to go to the floor, or that it's just like it's under consideration?
Yeah, I mean, they can do whatever they want, but it's them saying, these are the bills we think are going to come to the floor, and particularly in a special session, I'd be surprised if it doesn't come up, I guess.
Okay.
But they don't, they don't have to, right? There's nothing binding.
Right, okay, so.
They could decide to lay it aside.
We should do a statement, you know, calling, you know, for them to pass it, and, you know, similar to, you know, the other House of the Legislature, and for, you know, Governor Hochul to sign it. And so, question, even though this is a watered-down version and just applies to the, you know, IP, what do you call when you retire, the, you know, decommissioning?
Right.
Will this take care of business at least for that, at least for that?
For Indian Point, yeah.
Decommissioned?
Yeah.
So it's solid in terms of, so it's narrowly focused, but it will do what needs to be done for the purposes of that site, right?
Yeah, the amendments were meant, and we didn't push for the amendments, but the amendments were meant to narrow it to just Indian Point, and there's concerns with that, of course, but we do also need to stop that, so.
Right.
You know, I think you could do both things, you could do that in the short term and try to address.
Yeah, no, I think we want to get, you know, something a little more, you know, broad going forward about, you know, radiologic discharge and have a state policy for that, and have that be in law, but, you know, Naby, we should do that, so, you know, I'll do a statement, maybe I'll do a sign-on letter with members of the committee, you know, calling upon the Assembly to do the right thing, calling upon the governor to sign it, and that's what we'll do.
Great, yeah, I mean, it'd be enormous help, and the resolution will matter even if it's after the bill passes, because as I mentioned, we're really worried about the governor, it's going to be very hard.
The resolution is going to be important, just because we want the broader bill, you know, we want a statewide policy regarding like the discharge of, you know, radiologic, you know, elements, but, you know, we can get at it this way, so, Alex, anything else?
No, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Alex, always a pleasure to host people from Food and Water Watch. There you go, there you go, democracy.
All right. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, this, you're out of order, you know, not being in the, but I, 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 I get, I mean, like, the sergeant has to do his job, and we can't have people approaching the thing, it's like a, it's like a council rule thing, you know? But, but I can talk to you afterwards, I'll talk to you afterwards, if you're going to be here. Okay, we should, you should talk to Naby, my legislative director, and she'll, she can talk to you right now, she can come right over to you and talk to you. And so, next witness, we're, we're doing business here. We're knocking it out. What do we got here?
Is Emily Walker here? Okay, okay.
Nobody else in person?
All right.
Do we have anybody else online? We have people online?
So we have, we have people on Zoom, yes.
Okay.
We have people online.
All right, so, how do we do that?
The first person online with their hand raised is Carol Chervin, is that right? Okay, so, no one has their hand raised.
Oh, but, but who are we going to call?
So, so nobody's, so there's no online?
Yeah, so, so, there is no online.
Okay.
No, no, okay, no.
There's no online questions?
People were observing the hearing, and they wanted to tune in, observe it, and hear what was going on, but if they don't have their hands raised, then they have it. And so, let me make one last sweep to make sure there are no hands raised.
There are hands raised online, Ricky's saying you can go, you can go anywhere you want, and I have the name of people here who want to ask questions.
Well, all right, so why don't you just sit down and call out your names?
Okay.
Well, they're not going to ask questions, they're going to testify.
Yes, sorry.
Right.
I'm a stick. Okay. The first witness is Carol Chervin. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Carol Chervin, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. My name is Carol Chervin, I'm a resident at 527 West 110th Street in Manhattan, and I thank you Chairman Gennaro and the rest of the committee for this opportunity to talk about the ambulance sirens in support of the bills by Councilwoman Rivera and Councilwoman Brewer. Those are O286-2022 and O960-2020.
Yeah, we know the bills.
Um, I, okay, great. I am very much in support, as is a community of concerned citizens that I belong to with the name sirenety. That's sirenety, concerned about the ambulance noise, the ear-shattering decibel level that has disrupted our city, our general welfare, our health, and our community. When did this become a problem? Why is it such a problem now? Well, many of us have noticed that the decibel level of the, of the sirens increased slightly before the COVID pandemic. This is not something that was brought on only by the pandemic, this was before the pandemic, there seems to have been an uptick in the decibel level. We understand that the decibel level of the sirens is now 120. That is an outrageously high and damaging level for human ears. This is particularly damaging to babies and small children, but, but many of us can put our fingers in our ears and block out the noise, as annoying as that is, not everyone can do that. Seniors who are wearing hearing aids cannot do that, babies cannot do that, and bicycle riders who have their hands obviously occupied cannot do that.
Your time has expired.
So this is a matter of.
I.
Wow, that was.
Please finish your thought, please finish your thought.
Okay, I want to point out that all fingers seem to be pointed towards the FDNY as being in control of this, and FDNY in turn points its fingers to some federal guidelines which are by no means binding on them. So I encourage this committee and the sponsors to bring in the FDNY and ask them to answer the question which we have been unable to get them to answer, which is exactly what is their citation to binding authority on why the decibel level of sirens has to be 120, which is well beyond what human ears can tolerate.
Thank you for your good testimony, I can assure you that the two bill sponsors are, you know, adamant that this matter be, you know, fully explored, and I know that the council leadership is, you know, very interested in these bills as well, so you got the attention of this committee, the sponsors, and of the Speaker's Office of the Council, so I would expect a good outcome. But thank you very much for your good testimony.
Thank you.
And bringing this to, you know, giving your points of view on this, thank you.
What about Harry, Chris, or?
Okay.
He's on Zoom.
All right. Yeah. The next witness is David Wallach. Your time has begun.
Hello, my name is David Wallach, I'm a resident of Midtown, so as you can imagine, I hear quite a lot of sirens on a daily basis. I wanted to voice my support for these bills that go towards reducing the overall amount of siren noise. I think some people say, when I moved here, I heard some people say that moving to the city, you get used to sirens, but after being here for six years, I think that those people just have hearing damage. The current emergency vehicles are allowed to use sirens with a volume of 120 decibels, as some other people have testified, and this is loud enough to cause physical pain. Just last week, The New York Times published an article discussing the long-term health effects of increased ambient noise, and the study showed that, a study of more than four million people for over a decade showed that, starting at just 35 decibels, the risk of dying from cardiovascular disease increased by 2.9% for every decibel increase, so with a siren at 120 decibels, that's a 25% increase in risk of death from these factors. Current siren sounds may have an even greater effect due to the high-pitched nature of the noise, which is, which human ears are more sensitive to. I think that these bills could do a lot to reduce the overall noise burden on the people of New York City, and especially, we should be looking into alternative methods for alerting vehicles, because I think even at the current decibels, we can all see that the sirens don't do much to actually get cars to move out of the way, cars usually will not move until the ambulance is directly behind them, so I don't think it's necessary for them to, for pedestrians to be able to hear it from five blocks away. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and thank you for being brief, we have many witnesses to get to, appreciate your insights.
The next witness is Deep Mar DeTuring.
Your time has begun. Thank you, Chair Gennaro, committee members, my name is Deep Mar DeTuring from Sunnyside, Queens, I live in Julie Kwan's district. Thank you for taking the time to fine-tune the city's successful vehicle idling, idling citizen complaint program. I'm a member of the DEP's Citizen Air Complaints Working Group. The DEP told us perhaps a year ago that over 6,000 citizens registered to participate in the program, but how many are actually actively participating in it as opposed to quickly turning away in frustration? I encourage you to find out from the DEP, as the program appears to be a program largely limited to a highly educated group of activists, featuring many JVs, MDs, and PhDs. Why is that? It is because of the many built-in sources of frustration, it is the many rules, the frequent changes to those rules, the many deviations of those rules from the letter of the law, the difficulty to figure out all the data for your complaint to be accepted if you get the video just right, and all the other expert tasks left to the complainant. And did I mention the special challenge of actually collecting your word from oath? All this can become a routine to experts, but to others, this amounts to giant barriers to entry. I don't think that this is what the city council had in mind six years ago when discussing this program. Intro 898 will fix one of these barriers and is strongly supportive. However, that still leaves many more barriers. You have it in your hands to hold the DEP accountable, to turn the program into and maintain it as a citizen air complaint program. I'm also Chair of Nuclear New York, a pro-nuclear environmental advocacy group. Please allow me to express my opposition to Resolution 605. David Lockbaum, member of the Indian Point Decommissioning Oversight Board, a nuclear engineer and former director of the Nuclear Safety Project for the Union of Concerned Scientists, recommends the discharge into the river as the best option for what to do with the tritium water on-site. Buchanan's mayor Theresa Nikovoff.
Your time has expired.
Strongly opposes storage on-site for years to be come, as she wants her village to move on after the traumatic closure of Indian Point. The federal EPA and the NRC see no scientific reason to oppose the discharge of the tritium water, nor do state agencies such as the Department of Environmental Conservation and the Department of Health. Similar discharges have been done and are being done all over the world with no adverse effects on humans or the environment. We're looking at 1/25th of a gram of tritium at Indian Point. The toxicity of this amount can be compared to one gallon of.
We need you to conclude, we, we, we need you to conclude. We have many, many witnesses and your, uh, your, your, um, opposition to, uh, Resolution six-oh-five is duly noted. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Next witness, please.
The next witness is Drew Gammels.
Your time has begun. Good afternoon, my name is Drew Gammels. I'm a staff attorney at Riverkeeper. I'd like to thank Chair Person Gennaro and members of this committee for the opportunity to testify on the city's sustainability plan. We are happy to see that Plan NYC includes meaningful commitments to actions on climate resilience. However, we believe Plan NYC has omitted several important resiliency improvements and actions. Today, I'd like to specifically highlight three areas of concern, but my full testimony was submitted to the council. First, Plan NYC fails to set forth adequate recommendations to help fund the maintenance of the city's green infrastructure assets. We echo and support the message of our environmental justice partners that funding is an essential element to get things done, especially with respect to the city's green infrastructure program. It is clear that the maintenance of green infrastructure in perpetuity is essential and funding is needed to get that done. Our second major concern is that Plan NYC calls for the city to continue to work with the Army Corps through the New York and New Jersey Harbor and Tributaries feasibility study, or HATS. But it fails to set forth meaningful mechanisms by which to do so. The Army Corps' next steps could be the finalization of the EIS with an Agency Decision Milestone, or ADM. We recently became aware that it's anticipated that the Army Corps will issue its ADM next month, so in just July. In this case, such a decision will lock in the proposed storm surge gates and miles of massive concrete shoreline structures. We hope the council members will join Riverkeeper in urging the administration to push the Army Corps to develop a supplemental EIS to appropriately account for all sources of flooding, incorporate local sea level rise projections, and address potential natural and nature-based feature alternatives while using a more holistic cost-benefit analysis. Lastly, Riverkeeper applauds the administration for setting a goal to eliminate the discharge of untreated sewage into the New York Harbor by 2060. However, Riverkeeper is very concerned that renewable rikers is not mentioned in Plan NYC as a key project towards this goal. We don't believe that this will...
Your time has expired.
...without this project. So in conclusion, we hope the council works with the administration to ensure that these key issues are included in the city's resiliency and sustainability planning moving forward. Also, because I'm here as a Riverkeeper attorney, I do want to voice my support for Resolution six-oh-five.
Thank you very much for your statement and, uh, always happy to work with Riverkeeper. Appreciate you being here today. Thank you.
The next witness is George Packenham. Starting time.
Chairman Gennaro, thank you for the time. I hope to keep it to two minutes. And this is in regard to Intro eight-nine-eight, uh, under, uh, Councilmember Julian, Julie Menon in the idling bill. I was told by my colleagues I should provide a brief history of the idling law in that because fighting for cleaner air in New York City is just, is not just a recent concern. It's historic, and here it goes. In nineteen seventy-one, the anti, uh, first anti-idling law was passed, but the law was basically unenforced by NYPD. In two thousand and six, I saw the problem and began making a documentary film on the sheer nonsense of idling engines in New York City. It was such a waste and an important cause of air pollution. At the gist of the film, I began to, a deliberate campaign to find idling drivers, trucks, buses, and cars, wrapping on windows, finding, uh, asking if the drivers knew about the law from nineteen seventy-one and asking them to shut their engine off. I found myself as eighty percent successful. In two thousand and nine, two thousand and nine, Mayor Bloomberg signed into law, uh, making idling illegal for more than one minute in a school zone. Uh, we found this as big progress. In May two thousand and nine, The New Yorker magazine caught wind of what I was doing and in my research, and, and the great writer Ben McGrath wrote a story in The New Yorker. Uh, the story got published worldwide. NYC was now on the map as the city aware that of the ill effects of engine idling. In two thousand and twelve, I finished a documentary film called Idle Threat: Man on a Mission. And, um, I showed this film to key representatives of city council. I was directed towards Helen Rosenthal's office, who was then CM, to write a bill whereby citizens would be compensated for enforcing the law that NYPD ignores. Four years later, Bill seven-one-seven-A was enacted. Forty-five percent of a three-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine would be paid to participants. Again, huge media follow.
Your time has expired.
I'll, I'll wrap it up by saying...
Yeah, you, you, this is all good history and, and is well-known, but we're in the present and we're moving forward. And I, I, I get the sense that you are supportive of the anti-idling legislation before the council today. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, supportive of the bill in general, but it needs to be tweaked, and my two other colleagues or three other colleagues will, will speak to those tweaks. Thank you.
Great. Uh, thank you very much. I appreciate all the work you've done out, you know, over the decades on this issue. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Thank you.
The next witness is Kathy Legg. Starting time.
Hi, uh, I want to second, uh, the, I want to second the, um, comments of the other people who live in Midtown. Uh, I live in Murray Hill, and, uh, I cannot, uh, remember a time when noise has been particularly sirens as bad as it's been in the last five to ten years. And I'm, I'm really not sure what accounts for that, but I strongly support the two bills that were presented on that. Um, one thing that I'd like to note is that it's very, uh, uh, inexplicable as to why the sirens, uh, race down Lexington Avenue at three AM with sirens full-tilt when there's no traffic, there's absolutely no cars at three AM. So that's very maddening. We also have a big problem with the Midtown Tunnel entrance and traffic backed up Sundays, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, um, all the way back to Fifth Avenue. There are never traffic agents on the weekends. People sit on their horns for, um, you know, as long as they can. We used to have signs that said, "No honking," but of course, these days, that's not gonna, um, convince anybody. Um, one thing I'd like to mention is that I know the state passed a, uh, statute about, um, sound, uh, cameras. I'd like to see those if possible, many places, but particularly, um, in this neighborhood where we're faced with bumper-to-bumper traffic, um, particularly, as I said, it's not just weekdays, on the weekends, when we would hope for a little break. So again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to say few words, and I very strongly support the two bills having to do with reducing the sound.
Thank you very much for your, uh, testimony and your input. Uh, uh, we certainly do expect good things from these bills. I hope that helps your situation.
And sound cameras.
Thank you.
The next witness is Prashant George. Starting time. The next witness is Dr. Richard Gold. Starting time.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
Well, thank you Chairman, uh, Gennaro, um, for the opportunity to say something here. My statement is that is the noise generated by ambulance sirens necessary for the EMS and others to do their jobs? Over the last two to three decades, this question has been studied. Do the lights and sirens make any significant difference in patient management and outcome? In a few studies, the delay in arrival time at a hospital without sirens was about forty-two seconds to three-point-eight minutes compared with the use of sirens. However, there were no clinically significant differences in patient management or outcomes. Heart attacks and strokes do need speed. That is why the use of sirens should be determined by the patient and their condition. In Pennsylvania, a medical protocol was formulated by physicians and carried in each ambulance to determine who got the sirens and who did not. Ninety-two percent of patients were then transported ambulance to determine who got the sirens and who did not. Ninety-two percent of patients were then transported, were then transported... Now with quieter car cabins and so much auto-distraction, audio-distraction in the cabin, the sirens are getting more difficult to hear. Depending on the ambulance speeds, this can reduce reaction time of the civilian cars and ambulances to four to seven seconds, which is too fast for evasive action by either driver. I asked Commissioner of the Fire Department Laura Kavanaugh if she would be willing to establish a pilot project in one part of the city to test the evidence mentioned above. I never received a response to two separate letters. At the very least, NYC could switch out the current screaming sirens, which has been mentioned, of all ambulance services operating here, private and otherwise, and substitute the NYPD sirens which have been...
Your time has expired.
...and are certainly much quieter, but still get the job done. I hope to see something positive happening in the very near future. Thank you.
Thank you, and, and, and I can show you that, that, that the leadership of the council, not just this committee and the sponsors, are most interested in these bills. Thank you again for your, uh, for your, for your testimony today. Appreciate that.
The next witness is Juan Fang Wu. Starting time.
Hi, hi, thank you for giving me the chance to speak. My name is Juan Fang Wu, and I support Intro eight-nine-eight to translate the Citizen Air Complaint Program. I live in Manhattan Chinatown, where many of my Chinese aunties and uncles I meet aren't fluent in English. For example, when they share with me a restaurant pick, they say something like ninety-eight Mott Street, because not everyone can read the signage of the store or restaurant. Now currently, it's a challenge participating in the Citizen, uh, Complaint Program for non-English speakers. While, while how to use the submission portal is translated, I thank the DEP for their initiative in doing that. The full set of best practices, over two thousand words of instructions, to my knowledge, remain untranslated. Requiring that this gets translated will go a long way in allowing equitable or more, more equitable access and increased participation for the program. But why else does this matter? Reducing premature deaths caused by substandard air quality is really important. Lower Manhattan does not currently meet the EPA's new air quality standards. The EPA this year is proposing a maximum threshold for yearly levels of PM two-point-five to be ten micrograms per meters cubed, to reflect the latest research. Lower Manhattan is at more than eleven-point-two, uh, micrograms per meters cubed per the New York City Community Air Survey, uh, two thousand and twenty's report. Additionally, the city does not meet the WHO's tougher air quality standards, where their annual safe target is five micrograms per meters cubed for PM two-point-five, whereas across the city on average, that yearly value is eight-point-three. So to conclude, eliminating air pollution caused by needless vehicular, vehicular idling will help us narrow that gap and save lives. I support this bill because it will make this participation easier and help us get to that endpoint of no more needless idling sooner. My written testimony has the sources, and I thank the committee members for their time.
Thank you so much for your compelling testimony and following it up with submitting the full, uh, text of it to the committee. Appreciate it.
The next witness is Eric Eisenberg. Starting time.
Um, hi, my name is Eric Eisenberg. I'm a local attorney and serve as one of the members of the DEP Anti-IDling Working Group. Um, our New York State Constitution now makes clear that each person shall have a right to clean air. The wording is each person, it's not each white person, and it's not each English-speaking person. Every single person has a right to clean air in this state. That should not be a controversial statement. Yet the New York City Department of Environmental Protection disagrees with it. DEP's online instructions begin, "Instructions for Citizens Air Complaints." All questions are required to be answered in English. This is disgusting. This is racist. Hispanic New Yorkers who speak Spanish, Asian New Yorkers who speak Chinese, Korean, or Bengali, and Black New Yorkers who speak Haitian, uh, or Haitian Creole, they all are entitled to the DEP's assistance in achieving clean air in their communities. Foreign language statements are good evidence at oath. Oath has translators on-call, and they offer them in every single case. City council must immediately pass Alexa Villas' Intro eight-nine-eight to tell the DEP it must stand up for clean air for all New Yorkers instead of giving in to the DEP's lazy bureaucratic impulse of limiting its workload by arbitrarily refusing to address air pollution complaints. Intro eight-nine-eight only partially addresses the problem as DEP's policy choices have made its anti-idling and air pollution program generally inaccessible and inhospitable, um, to everyone. For example, DEP regularly insults citizen participants by calling their submissions frivolous based on DEP's questionable interpretations of the idling law. DEP set policies over the years, like requiring citizens to run out into the middle of the road to get footage of an idling truck from all four sides that resulted in, in an injury. It has insisted that idling delivery trucks that have fraudulently obtained passenger plates or removed their plates cannot be pursued for idling. It has required footage well beyond the legally mandated three minutes. It refuses to pursue idling buses that have simply left their door open while folks occasionally step on and off. It has excused all idling by...
Your time has expired.
...truck company blumess, even when the employees simply abandoned their idling vehicle to eat lunch. I encourage all council members to read the idling FAQ and ask whether anybody without legal counsel can understand it. And what's worse, uh, the DEP actually writes summonses against citizens when they make harmless unintentional errors, costing one pediatrician over five thousand dollars to clear his name. This is, to put it mildly, not how you encourage citizen participation or promote clean air. Um, and, and lastly, I would just say, please do not support Section Three of Julie Menon's Intro ten-thirty-eight-A, which will give the DEP more power to harm New Yorkers by creating arbitrary policies that, that vary from the idling law. Uh, thank you.
Thank you for your comprehensive and thoughtful testimony. That is, um, very, very valuable to us. We do appreciate you and, and your ongoing work with the DEP to, um, make their programs better by giving them your time to try to do that. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next is Lamonda Williams. Starting time. Next witness is Logan Weld. Starting time.
I'm keen in support of Intro eight-nine-eight. My name is Logan Weldy, and I live in the East Village. I am an active participant in the Citizen Idling Reporting Program and a member of DEP's Citizen Advisory Committee. For my day job, I am an attorney and a legislative director for, in, an environmental health-based nonprofit. I study legislation and work with legislators to enact protective laws. You all should be extremely proud of yourselves. New York City's Citizen Idling Program is the best legislation in America that I know of to deal with daily microviolations such as vehicular idling. Giving citizens the power to report these violations and receive a percentage of the proceeds is pure genius and is the model to emulate. Vehicular idling is a huge environmental problem, and prior to the citizen component, there was virtually no enforcement. This year, NYC is on track to issue almost one hundred thousand idling tickets due almost exclusively to citizens.
That's right.
Although still only a fraction of the yearly violations. Emissions from vehi, vehicles contain many dangerous chemicals, causing everything from breathing problems, cancer, and death. In fact, New Jersey's DEP, which has a similar pop, similar population to New York City, has stated in an anti-idling fact sheet that fine particular pollution, the stuff that comes from idling vehicles, may actually cause more deaths in New Jersey than homicides and car accidents combined. I carry this air monitor with me, and you'd be shocked to see how bad it is when I come close to idling vehicles. Expanding this program, which Intro eight-nine-eight does, is a no-brainer. I am confident that it will pass. I am very concerned, however, that Councilmember Menon's bill, especially Section Three of ten-thirty-eight, will produce the opposite effect. That bill would essentially destroy the citizen component of this program and slash the amount of idling tickets issued for illegal idling. DEP and oath have made, have not made this program easy to participate in. They have constantly thrown up barriers to participation, and I would challenge each of you to go out and try and file a successful idling report. Passage of eight-nine-eight is a win for the city, its citizens, and our shared air. However, ten-thirty-eight would be a loss for all. If ten-thirty-eight passes, the idling law will go the way of the other bills you have passed, which are never enforced, like the air conditioning, open doors...
Your time has expired.
Conclusion, you as stewards of our environment are responsible for making our air quality better. In fact, under the state constitution, your obligation as trustees is to make sure that our air does not worsen. Thanks.
Thank you very much for all of your advocacy, for being here, for being patient, um, and waiting all that time to give us the benefit of your good testimony. Appreciate that.
The next witness is Mary Inawa. Starting time.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you so much. Um, thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Mary Inawa. I'm a lawyer. I'm still living here in New... I've been living here in New York City for more than 25 years. I'm also active in anti-nuclear movements for more than a decade. And I'm testifying in support of Resolution 605 that prohibits dumping of radioactive agent into the waters. We also need to urge Governor Hochul to support and sign relevant New York State legislation because the Assembly Bill has not passed yet, but will be discussed at the special session next week on Tuesday. And I support this resolution because I'm very concerned that Holtic International's dumping plan might impact not only the people, but also the environment. At the public forum in April, Holtic explained that they need to process and dump approximately 1.3 to 1.5 million gallons from the radioactive fuel pools, a fueling water storage tank, the reactor cavity, and elsewhere. The dumping might start as early as September, so this is urgent matter. The so-called processed wastewater that will be dumped into the river contains tritium or radioactive hydrogen that could be incorporated into our cells or DNA and possibly other radioactive isotopes. And such dumping can negatively affect the health and local communities and sustainability of our environment. This is environmental justice issue because communities near the Indian Point are already burdened by toxic emissions, including from the incinerator plant and wastewater treatment plant. And it is so important that New York City stands in solidarity with these environmental justice communities. I would also like to highlight that there is no safe dose of ionizing radiation, all exposures are cumulative, and some isotopes are extremely long-lived. So that is why I like to highlight that
Your time has expired.
Oh, okay. So in conclusion, please urge Governor Hochul to support and sign this relevant New York State legislation. So thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you so much for being patient and giving the benefit of your very good testimony. We appreciate it.
The next witness is Hunter Severini.
Starting time.
Hello, my name is Hunter Severini, and I'm here to speak in support of 898. While the Citizens' Air Complaint Program in New York has undoubtedly been a pioneering success, I believe that it could be significantly strengthened by 898. The current reality of New York City is that areas like the South Bronx are faced with some of the worst air quality in the city and also have some of the lowest participation in the Citizens' Air Complaint Program. I know this because I've actually mapped this out, and anyone interested, I highly recommend doing so. The resources are available on New York Open Data. There's a public database of Citizens' Air Complaints. And I would say that I've found an enormous discrepancy between where complaints are for, under the Citizens' Air Complaint Program, and then where the actual pollution is. So we are unfortunately, you know, as I said, the areas like the South Bronx have some of the worst air quality, but also have some of the lowest participation in the Citizens' Air Complaint Program. Because of that participation, the situation isn't improving, whereas in Manhattan, the air quality has improved a lot because of all the citizen participation in the Bronx. That's barely happened, and in fact, I'd say it's more the opposite because people aren't used to getting tickets, so they think that they can pollute there. I would say in general, considering, you know, just to give one example, considering how widely spoken Spanish is throughout the city, it makes sense that really every effort should be made to accommodate this population, and I think the same goes for all other designated city languages because the city has clearly stated that it's important enough for them to accommodate people in these languages. There are enough people that speak that. And so, as I mentioned, I really look, recommend to anyone who's interested in data to look on NY Open Data and let them know, you can see what the distribution of these air quality complaints is. I think that DEP should seek to expand accessibility beyond the requirements
Your time has expired.
And lastly, I just wanted to draw attention to Julie Menon's misguided 1038A, which weakens New York's environmental laws. I do not believe it deserves consideration by the committee. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your good testimony on both bills that you brought forward, and we really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Our final witness is Andrew Van Brisker.
Starting time.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Van Brisker. I am a first-generation Vietnamese-American, a cancer survivor, and I support Introduction 898, which tears down language barriers and expands access to the Citizens' Air Complaint Program. Thank you Chair Gennaro for scheduling this hearing, and thank you Councilmember Abilis for sponsoring this bill. The Citizens' Air Complaint Program is the most successful citizen-environmental program in the world, and I applaud the City Council for its strong commitment to broaden access to non-English speakers in this important effort to fight the climate crisis. A crisis made stark last week when an orange haze descended on our city and propelled New York to the worst air quality in the world and reminded us how toxic New York City air was before other important environmental protections laws, like the Clean Air Act, were passed. My family resides in Carroll Gardens, Brooklyn, and together with so many others joining us today, are passionate allies of New York's clean air community. Each day, my nine-year-old daughter and I walk or bike our city streets to school, the park, to work, or to stores our neighbors own and run. Each day, we breathe in way too much bad air, bad air that kills. These toxic emissions from trucks, idling trucks and buses serve no purpose at all. In its 2023 State of the Air Report, the American Lung Association warned that air pollution is tied to a wide array of serious health effects in every stage of life, from conception through old age, including lung cancer, asthma, impaired neurological development and cognition in children, and early death from heart disease and stroke. An analysis from the Union of Concerned Scientists reports that minority communities in New York inequitably bear the burden of the highest exposures to these toxic transportation emissions. Today, we have an opportunity to begin to rectify this injustice and an opportunity to broaden the program's access to non-English speakers, to empower non-English speakers in New York's most affected communities to take part and help to begin to transform the structures and institutions that reinforce and perpetuate inequality in their communities.
Your time has expired.
Just one second, please, but there's more work to be done. 10 seconds, and we must expand access to this program even further. Far too many roadblocks still exist. Arbitrary rules and needlessly complicated requirements, which constantly change and make it more difficult for citizens to file complaints, are implemented without notice and without any opportunity for public comment. I'm almost over. To that end, the trucking industry and business lobbyists, among others, are now trying to fast-track a new bill, 1038, that seeks to undermine all of the city council's hard work to clean up our air, a bill that seeks to subsidize corporate financial interests using our health and the health of our loved ones. It guts the Citizens' Air Complaint Program by making it harder for ordinary citizens to take part. It destroys incentives to participate. It drives down citizen participation with the threat of receiving nothing in exchange for significant outlays of effort. It creates massive loopholes that let corporations pollute our air and get off scot-free. It has been unlawful to idle for more than three minutes in New York since 1972, but the anti-idling law went virtually unenforced until the City Council wisely passed legislation establishing this citizen enforcement under this program. Now, the trucking industry and business
Please conclude, please conclude. I mean, I'm willing to give you a little latitude, but, you know, I need you to conclude.
I understand. The program is on a trajectory for more than 90,000 complaints this year. The anti-idling program is working, and now the trucking industry and business lobbyists want to gut it by breaking its backbone, citizen enforcement. New York has made real progress and simply cannot afford to backslide. And so I urge you to oppose Intro 1028, this terrible bill. And this is my conclusion. Clear air is not just aspirational stuff to strive for. It is the law of the land. As you know, New York has recently approved a constitutional amendment that enshrines our right to clean air in the Constitution. And so today, I urge you to bring Intro 898, this important bill now before us, to expand access to the Citizens' Air Complaint Program, up for a vote without delay. We must encourage more citizens to take part in the program if we were to end the scourge of idling once and for all. Air pollution does not discriminate, and New York City agencies must not either. Thank you, thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all your passion and your very, very substantive testimony, particularly on Intro 1038. Really appreciate that. I wish you happiness and good health. So thank you very much, appreciate it. When no one else wishing to be heard, this hearing is adjourned. When no one else wishing to be heard, this hearing is adjourned. When no one else wishing to be heard, this hearing is adjourned. When no one else wishing to be heard, this hearing is adjourned. When no one else wishing to be heard, this hearing is adjourned. When no one else wishing to be heard, this hearing is adjourned. When no one else wishing to be heard, this hearing is adjourned. When no one else wishing to be heard, this hearing is adjourned. When no one else wishing to be heard, this hearing is adjourned. When no one else wishing to be heard, this hearing is adjourned. When no one else wishing to be heard, this hearing is adjourned. When no one else wishing to be heard, this hearing is adjourned. When no one else wishing to be heard, this hearing is adjourned. When no one else wishing to be heard, this hearing is adjourned. When no one else wishing to be heard, this hearing is adjourned. When no one else wishing to be heard, this hearing is adjourned. When no one else wishing to be heard, this hearing is adjourned. When no one else wishing to be heard, this hearing is adjourned. When no one else wishing to be heard, this hearing is adjourned. When no one else wishing to be heard, this hearing is adjourned. When no one else wishing to be heard, this hearing is adjourned. When no one else wishing to be heard, this hearing is adjourned.